2:00 PM meeting of the Cohasset Planning Board. I'd like to begin with a roll call of board members by alphabetical order, starting with Clark Brewer.
Clark Brewer, here.
Tom Callahan, here.
Paul Grady?
Oh, sorry, Paul Grady, present.
Eric Potter?
Eric Potter, here.
Amy Glassmeyer, here. So, all members, our associate is not here yet, as I can see, but will join us. But otherwise, all members are here. I'd like to introduce our staff members. Paul Colery, would you please identify yourself?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Paul Colery, here in present.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our staff in attendance this evening. Ms. Laura Lind, the Director of Planning. Ms. Jen Orem, the Associate Director of Permits, Planning, and Zoning. Ms. Cindy Amara is serving as our Town Council for some of the discussions that we'll be having this evening. Tonight's meeting will be orchestrated in the following manner. For public comment, please input your full name and address into the Q and A field. During public comment, our staff Lauren and Jen will promote individuals one by one so that they can use microphone and camera, if it works, to address the board. Three minimum, three minutes maximum per individual. And if it turns to be the case that your comment has been stated by someone previous to you, please refrain from stating it in the record and add it to the chat instead. It will be included in the record that way. All statements and questions in this meeting will be directed to the Chair, that's myself, and I will then direct the questions to the appropriate persons. In this meeting discussion, we should be courteous and respectful and should confine our discussions to the subject under this, under consideration. Tonight, we have a considerable amount of business. To complete our meeting efficiently, I would ask my colleagues for the following adjustment, which is can we move up the announcement of the warrant articles currently being considered for spring town meeting? If no one disapproves, then I request a motion to move the vote to refer proposed annual town meeting zoning articles to the Select Board for inclusion on the warrant to this time. Does anybody dissent? I see no dissent. Can somebody make a motion to move that forward?
Motion to move forward.
Can I hear a second? Can I get a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Can I just clarify, we have four articles, correct? Or is it four, eight, how many other?
There are, there are ten.
Ten, okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colery.
Paul Colery, aye.
Mr. Grady?
Grady, aye.
Mr. Potter?
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye, thank you. Then let's move that up to this moment, and I will then ask that one of you make a motion to vote to refer proposed annual town meeting zoning articles to Select Board for inclusion on the warrant. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion made.
Can I get a second? Can I hear a roll call alphabetical order?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan?
I'm sorry, Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Colery, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Paul Grady, aye, sorry.
Amy, Amy Glassmeyer, aye, thank you. That should do that bit of business.
Laura?
Yes, Ms. Lind?
I would just like to clarify, just for the sake of our meeting minutes and for the record, the articles that, that you just did, so we're all understanding. This is Article P1. I'm just going to share my screen actually quickly for you, so that we're all on the same page. Article P1 through P5, that's the Floodplain and Watershed Protection District Amendment, which is the FEMA mandated update. That's Article P1. Article P2 is the Solar Overlay District. Article P3, the Zoning Map, Whitney Spur Rail Trail Reclass, the Fast Food Restaurant Definition Amendment, and the Special Permits from the Village Business District. These are five that were tabled for annual town meeting of 2019 that we're just bringing back, as those were tabled due to the COVID response. The new article from the Planning Board this year is Large House Plan Review Amendment that we have from Mr. Callahan. Articles P7 through P9 are from the Zoning Bylaw Working Group regarding the Use Variants Amendment, Land Alteration, and then the sunset of the Senior Multifamily Residential Overlay District. And then Article P10 was something that was just requested of us, and that is the Board of Health Amendment, which this was done at the annual town meeting for the general bylaws. However, there are references to the Board of Health in the zoning bylaws. They have requested that they be changed every instance to the Board of Public Health, and as it relates to zoning bylaws, that needs to come to Planning Board. So, that is the 10th article, just so that we're all on the same page as to what will be moving forward to the Select Board to be referred back to you all to proceed with public hearings.
Thank you. Could you, could you offer any information at this point about when we think the public hearings might be likely?
Certainly, I actually can share that screen as well. So, this is an informal calendar. Here we are today, at the 24th meeting. This is when you're voting to send the articles to the Select Board. If we scan down to March, we will prepare the, we'll get the draft article language distributed to all of you for the first draft that we'll be looking at, as well as the Select Board. It will be posted with the Town Clerk, and we'll post the public hearing notice. On the Select Board's meeting on the 9th, we will request that they vote to place these on the warrant, and then we will have an informal discussion at the 10th with the Zoning Bylaw Working Group and about the Large Home Review Amendment. So, those, those four new articles that we'll be discussing, we'll open the public hearings on the 24th of our meeting. And I've actually, I'm requesting that we add a meeting on the 31st, because I was informed that our subsequent meeting beyond that actually puts us too late in the rest of this calendar. So, we would have, ideally, our public hearings open on the 24th of March, continue as necessary on the 31st, and then we would close and continue on to the Advisory Committee and Select Board process to secure their votes and recommendations as we head into the final closing of the warrant language in April.
Thank you, thank you very much. May I ask if at this time, any Planning Board member recognizes that those dates will present a conflict for them? I see no indication of such, so those will serve as our targets for public hearings. Thank you very much.
We're seeing an awful lot of each other, I see.
So, now we will begin the business of our evening's meeting, and we will entertain a discussion of three ANRs, otherwise known as approvals not required. We will hear first from, I believe, Mr. John Cavanaro, who is the Consulting Engineer, about the three ANRs. We will take them one at a time, and after each of them, the Planning Board members should be expected to weigh in and add comments as they see fit. So, if you would like to begin, Mr. Cavanaro, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If it's okay with the, with the Board, I'd like to just put these in order of what I would consider more straightforward to less straightforward. So, if we could start, I could share screen. I will begin with 75 Border Street, which is submitted as a correction plan to a previous Form A that was endorsed by the Board back in 2018, and I'll quickly review the history here. So, the plan on your screen is the original Form A that was endorsed in 2018. And what this was, was it was a subdivision of a parcel of land that fronted on Border Street, but was actually part of a larger parcel that fronted and was addressed on Black Horse Lane owned by the Brown family. The intent was to, they owned two parcels as part of 30 Black Horse Lane. This was considered 30R Black Horse Lane at the time. And what they wanted to do is to subdivide a buildable lot that fronted on Border Street and keep the remaining area of land that was really part of the living space at 30 Black Horse, which included a tennis court and other amenities. So, this survey was prepared from a previous survey done for the entire Black Horse Lane property. And essentially, the, the control was brought from Black Horse Lane towards Border Street, and it ended really at the southeast, southeastern corner of the land, which included a monument. So, during the survey, we recovered a good amount of record monumentation along stone walls and drill holes, and we found a stone wall where the property hit very well here. We found a corner at the corner of Border Street, and as I mentioned, that southeastern corner of the land. We had an occupation on the neighbor's lot. So, everything looked, there was nothing out of the ordinary. In fact, everything fit very well. We were aware that there was a record drill hole at this location that was in a budding lot corner with the property adjacent to us, to the south on Border Street, but we did not recover that at the time of the original survey. So, since then, the property adjacent to 75 Border has been conveyed, and that owner did a full instrument survey of their property. So, now we're back on Border Street. This is the Lot 1 that we created back in 2018, and this is the abutting lot. So, when they did their survey, they carried that Border Street layout further down towards the Border Street Bridge, and they found multiple monumentation along Border Street. They agreed with the corner that we had found and held at the southeastern corner of our lot, but in their survey, they actually recovered that drill hole that we did not recover in the original survey. And it's because when they found this additional monumentation along Border Street, and they fit their record plan into their, into the front on Border Street, it rotated into very close to this drill hole that we did not recover. We actually had our original line swinging out where this dashed line is. So, we ended up collaborating with that surveyor. We went back out, did additional instrumentation. We recovered the monuments that they found on Border Street, and we agreed with their findings, and as a result, created this correction plan, which we would like to get endorsed so that it becomes the, the new record of our Lot 1 that will serve as the conveyance instrument for any transfers moving forward, so that that previous plan will not get carried further in the title. So, that's the purpose of this plan. So, we're not creating any frontage, we're not really changing any lot lines. We're really just correcting a plan.
Thank you for that detailed discussion. Planning Board members by alphabetical order, do you have any comments, starting with Clark Brewer?
No, you, you're not changing any frontage. You're, the lot area changes don't make either of them non-conforming by zoning for area. So, this just seems like it's a correction, that it, it'd be great if all of the plans we saw were this easy.
Right, thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Nothing.
Mr. Colery?
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Mr. Grady?
No, it's pretty cut and dried.
Mr. Potter?
Nothing to add.
No change for me. All right, with that, may I ask for an approval for this ANR? Do I need to ask for an approval, or am I?
We endorse ANRs.
Right.
So, it would be a motion to, for the Planning Board to endorse the ANR as presented.
Don't move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call by alphabetical order.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Colery, aye.
Paul Grady, aye. Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, and on to the next one, which is 90 Whitehead Road. This, too, I think should be less complicated, although it's a more sophisticated plan. This is a land court plan, it's a registered parcel of land at 90 Black Horse Lane. Black Horse Lane is a private way that comes off of Atlantic Ave. It's, it's an ancient way. And for the most part, the majority of the land is registered land along Whitehead Road. The intent of this plan is to subdivide an existing parcel that is roughly four and a half to five acres in size. It fronts along Whitehead Road. And the plan is, this is really a land planning exercise. The current owner intends to convey the property at some point, but when he plans to do so, he would like to retain the majority of a sandy beach and coastal dune that is essentially the lot that we're creating, this Lot 26. This is not a buildable lot, because it'll, is less than the adequate area, but the intention is to not preserve a buildable lot. The intention is to maintain a beach and a coastal dune that this owner has made a considerable investment in restoring over the years. He owns other property in the neighborhood, and he spent a considerable time and effort, and would like to preserve that coastal feature and also maintain this beach, which is, it's a prominent beach between two large ledge outcroppings, so. And it's also adjacent to other property held by the same owner. So, that's the purpose of this plan. This plan has gone through an extensive review and approval by the Massachusetts Land Court, which is why you see a lot more detail on this plan. Everything that's shown in this plan is required by the Massachusetts Land Court. And what happens is, after we go through their review and approval, we come to this Board to get your endorsement, and then that, that Mylar will become what's called the petitioner's plan at Land Court, and that will be the plan that will get carried forward and ultimately become part of the chain of title. So, that's it in a nutshell. You may have some questions that I'm happy to answer.
All right, Planning Board members by alphabetical order, would you like to weigh in, starting with Clark Brewer?
Just a clarification, the, the red lines that I can see here, these are previous lot lines?
No, they're actually traverse lines, Clark, that are required by the Massachusetts Land Court. It's really just, it's.
So, to set up control?
It's math, to tie all of the control into a closed traverse.
Okay. So, it, the plan itself says it's not a buildable lot, and then that's repeated in the, in the notes. So, it looks like you're, there's frontage on the, on the way? And that way was in existence prior to zoning?
Yes.
Or is it both of those ways? There's, there's two ways?
Well, Black Horse Lane is really where this lot has illegal frontage. There's another way that goes out to another parcel.
You just said Black Horse Lane, you mean Whitehead?
I'm sorry, Whitehead Road, I apologize.
No, no worries. So, so the one on the right, the one that looks like a rail bed in layout, is, that's Whitehead? And then the one?
That's Whitehead Road, correct, yes.
The one on the bottom has a different name, or is it a common driveway?
It's more of a common driveway.
Right. Okay, but certainly, there's plenty of frontage, not that, not that it matters, since it's not a buildable lot on the way.
Well, but, and there's adequate frontage on the remaining land, more importantly, at 90 Whitehead. We're leaving adequate width and frontage for that lot and area, of course.
Got it, all right, thanks for the clarification, no further questions.
Mr. Callahan?
Now that, now that I understand it, I don't really have a problem. I just, he's not doing any deed at the moment, though, but when a deed for this new lot is done, I would like to see a deed restricted, but it's not buildable as well.
All right, thank.
Although it's mentioned all over this plan, I just would love the added comfort when that time comes.
Okay, so can you take, state your summary view of this, please?
I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm fine with it from a legal point of view that they can do this, but I, I, you know, I just worry about the lot becoming buildable at some point in the future.
All right, thank you. Mr. Colery?
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Mr. Grady?
No, I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Potter?
Nothing to add.
And I agree as well, so I make a motion to endorse this ANR?
I just have one more, one more question.
Okay.
How much of the lot, John, is, is under the Jurisdiction of Conservation Commission? I see the high watermark pretty much goes through the middle of the lot. What's the 100-foot, where does the 100-foot buffer zone?
The entire lot, the entire lot, Clark, is a coastal dune.
Okay, so it's, so it, Conservation Commission, even if it was a buildable lot in terms of size, they would, they're.
Effectively not a buildable lot due to that as well.
Right, 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 okay. Thank you.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to endorse the ANR as presented.
All right, let's roll call vote, starting alphabetically with Mr. Brewer.
Do we need, did we get a second?
We need to set, sorry, can I get a second for that?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, alphabetical.
Brewer says aye.
Callahan, aye.
Colery, aye.
Grady, aye.
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye, thank you. Let's move on to the third ANR.
Thank you very much. So, the third ANR is at Crocker Lane and Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Crocker Lane is a private way that has existed, dates back to 1925. This also was registered land at one time. It's no longer registered land. Essentially, th- these are two lots that you all may be familiar with to some degree. One in colored in blue, and I did a little colored sketch for this presentation along with the plan that we submitted as well, just to sort of get our bearings straight, because this is a, a large tract of land. So, in blue is a 31-acre parcel that is essentially Cohasset Heights landfill, okay? So, it's the large rectangle represents the former Cohasset Heights landfill. And it has a section of land that runs down to 3A, Chief Justice Cushing Highway, and that's where its current frontage sits. The second lot is a 12-acre lot that is essentially the Cohasset Sports Complex that sits at the top of Crocker Hill Lane. And that, too, has a strip of land that runs down with frontage on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. This plan was endorsed by the Board back in 2002 as one of many Form As that was generated to reorganize the land up here. Just for, for the bearings, this is the Hingham Lumber, Cohasset Collision, and the Medical Building, Brass Kettle, that's this whole complex. So, the purpose of this plan for that same 43-acre swath of land is the owner would like to put this land to its highest and best use in terms of future planning. Right now, really, the only, there's really a couple functions here. One is the, the sports facility. The landfill is closed, and he's, they're left with about another, oh, eight to 10 acres of land. Actually, a little bit more than that, probably about 13 acres of land. So, the plan is to see what can be done to subdivide this land and to essentially put frontage on the actual frontage, which is Crocker Lane, which is that private way. So, Crocker Lane itself comes up from 3A. It's a narrow 20-foot right-of-way, and it ends sort of at the, near the top of the hill, from a paper standpoint. From a practical standpoint, the, the actual way itself falls outside of the actual mathematical right-of-way, and it traverses up and makes its way up to the top of the landfill. The sports facility is off to the, to the left as you're coming up. And so, the, the plan here was to essentially put that sports facility on one lot with frontage on Crocker Lane to combine the frontages from the two frontage strips down to 3A and create a lot that was about eight to eight and a half, eight to nine acres in size on the lower area. And then between those two lots, have a third lot that has frontage on Crocker Lane as well, and that sat adjacent to the landfill, which would sit on its own parcel, not to be subdivided because of environmental restrictions. This, this landfill has to stay on its own parcel, but this would have access through an easement from Crocker Lane to the landfill parcel. Just to give a very quick history on Crocker Lane. Crocker Lane, as I mentioned, is a way that dates back to 1925. This is a registered parcel of land. This is the same math that we're using for the Crocker Lane alignment that makes its way up the hill and ends at the middle of the top of the hill. And since 1925, we found two Form A plans endorsed by the Planning Board with frontage along Crocker Lane. This was, and, and these lots don't resemble anything that's out there today, but essentially, as one would come up Crocker Lane from 3A, this is really behind the, the small business building in Cohasset Collision, there was a lot that had frontage, one, two, three lots on this Crocker Lane, and one of them was slightly modified further in 1981. This is currently, Rosano Davis has a construction yard operation on this lot on Crocker Lane itself. So, that just gives a little background on, on Crocker Lane. That's the gist of, of what this application is about.
All right, thank you very much. Planning Board members in alphabetical order, please comment. Clark Brewer?
So, so I understand, John, what you're doing. The thing that, the thing that jumps out at me is Lot 3, in what you're doing with Lot 3, you've got frontage on, on 3A. So, I don't really, whatever's shown in blue, I don't, I don't, I think, I don't think that's an issue. But in Lot 2 and Lot 1, it, it, it looks like you're taking frontage from the center of the, the historic Crocker Lane, which is actually not the same as the easement that's used for access and, used for access and utilities, and, and would also be accessing the, the landfill, the capped landfill parcel. So, I'm, I'm wondering if you were to realign the geometry of Crocker Lane to, to align with the, the easement, basically move Crocker Lane to the easement, which would make sense to some extent, right? And then you could use the two sides of that. Since it's been a way in existence prior to zoning, you could use the two sides of that to create the frontage with your 40-foot easement area. That would make, that, to me, that would make sense. It would take some of the, some of the, the space out of the lots that, that is the easement, if it was re, realigned, but it would, it would give you frontage all the way. Can you scroll up a little bit so we can see down? It would actually give you frontage for your purple parcel as well, if you, if you were to do that. Or, but, you know, right, because right now, the, the two lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, they, 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 by geometry, they don't have frontage on Crocker Lane. They've, what you're proposing is that they have frontage on each other, instead of on a, on a way. And it seems like realigning Crocker Lane with the easement and then using the two sides of that easement slash Crocker Lane for your frontage. I think that would make sense. I think that would make sense and, and give you your fifty feet of frontage, um, instead of the lots, uh, budding on each other. Um, and, you know, in terms of the, the non, non-buildable lot, if, if Lot Two, if, if there was a preference to have just an easement, um, that goes through, um, Lot Two for access to the purple landfill lot, that, that might, um, that might be, uh, adequate in that there is a way there, uh, this pavement, uh, provided that there's an, there's a, an access easement across Lot Two. That way, you wouldn't be creating, uh, two separate sections of Lot Two. Um, that, that, you know, I'm, you know, un- unfortunately, I just, I, I, it doesn't quite make sense to me to have lots that front on each other when you have, um, you have a historic, uh, way or lane in Crocker Lane, and, uh, you've got this, um, pretty straightforward, you know, well-constructed easement that actually probably should be the road. Um, 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 uh, th- those are my main, uh, comments and, uh, suggestions for moving this forward.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Tom Callahan.
My concern with all of these A and Rs is what, what's this being done for? And, uh, John, maybe just clarify, I'm looking at your survey notes and I'm sticking my head up close to read it. Number three, which lots are going to be deemed non-buildable here?
Sorry about that. So, um, we created two parcels with this plan. One is this narrow parcel A, which is three point two acres. So what we did was we severed the frontage from the original sports facility lot.
Yeah.
So that would be combined with Lot Three. So it, it's really just, the blue is one lot.
Yeah.
And then the second parcel is the landfill. Because that, that does not, um, that would have an access, but it wouldn't be a buildable lot.
Would, would Lot Two and Lot Three be considered buildable?
Yes.
And, and Lot Through, Lot Three and, uh, combines with Parcel, uh, A? Parcel A at some point in the future? So Parcel A, while it's not buildable now, uh, would be buildable when combined with Lot Three?
Correct.
But, but the purple lot would never be buildable?
Correct.
I mean, they're, just their configurations, you know, kind of begs the question, what, what would be the future plan here? May I ask, are windmills in the future?
They're, they're really, honestly, Tom, there's no future. This is the first step into the future, is to figure out how the land can get broken up and used. And I think, you know, I agree with Clark's thought here, we'd be happy to, to make that edit. We're, we're, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that makes sense. I agree. That makes a lot of sense. I'm just curious as to what can happen with two and three, that's all.
You'll, you'll prob- you will find out, because whoever does anything out there, I'm sure will trigger up a site plan review that you'll be aware of.
Um, uh, Paul Coleri.
Hi, John, good evening.
Good evening.
You may not know, but maybe the other board members may remember. We, we had some proposal come before the board about a year ago, I believe, in, uh, talking about solar panels up on that hill there. Um, if somebody could help remind me, or does anybody remember when we looked at that? There was a company that came before us and they talked about, I think it was meant to go on top of Apostle. Is it B, if you scroll down a little bit?
That's right.
The landfill, yeah. So that, that was, uh, proposed, is that still in the works?
I'm not familiar with it. Um, it, I, I am, again, this is what I know about this land, is, is how to reconfigure it.
But, you know, um, what, what I remember about that, Paul, was that they came before us. It was super preliminary, and, um, I guess the, the reality of this is, is if it's not a buildable, uh, if it's not a buildable lot, um, something passive like, uh, solar panels could be built on it and, unless there's some kind of interpretation that, that, uh, those, uh, panels are, are a structure and, um, um, or there's some issue of, I mean, with, with solar panels, they're, they're basically just maintained. It's not, uh, it's not an occupancy. I mean, I, I, I've always said that I thought that parcel would be great for, um, a two, an inner tube run in the winter and, um, a, a ropes course, uh, zip line in the summer. But, but again, those, those might fall into the same category of not a building, but, um, equipment like what, what you'd see in solar panels. So, I mean, I, I'd love to see that, um, parcel used, because it's, it's got great views and, um, it's surrounded by, uh, this really spectacular conservation land. But, um, uh, I think that's probably for the owner to, to look into in the future, whether equipment, uh, located on a non-buildable parcel is, um, uh, conforms to zoning.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Lauren. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. I just wanted to state, um, just for clarification, that actually, the article P two that I referenced, um, the ground, the amendment to the ground-mounted sol- solo photovoltaic overlay district, um, actually, the impetus of that previous iteration of the zoning amendment was because of this parcel. Um, it had come to the board in a previous A and R, actually, to portion out. Um, so that was the, the cause behind that zoning article. So I just wanted to, um, make the board, make that known, in case anybody had forgotten about that.
I was just about to ask that question. I assumed that the new bylaw proposal to deal with this.
Um, okay, let's, can I, can I continue, please, with the rest of the Planning Board members? Uh, Paul Grady.
Oh, I have nothing to add. I've been listening to the rest, so.
Eric, Eric Potter.
Was, was Paul Coleri done? Did he, did he, wanted to follow up on, on, um, my comments?
Um, no, I'm, I'm good. I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to see that my memory served me correct.
It's good to have a long-term memory.
Keep it. Um, Eric Potter.
Nope, nothing for her to add.
All right, Amy Glassmire, no, uh, further comment. Um, I'd like to, uh, then, uh, Clark Brewer.
One more comment is in, uh, the survey notes, number three. The last sentence said parcels are not buildable in and of themselves. I think should be changed to, uh, not buildable, um, in and of itself, as the, the parcel is an it, not a them, or a, uh, a he or a she.
Okay. I think what I would do is, uh, request then that we, I'm not sure what, what's a Form A to request to, to amend, and I'll come back with a revised plan, or.
We, we just need to make sure we don't give you constructive approval. So I think we need a, a letter for an extension. Lauren, do you know, um, do you have a standard format for that?
Yes, I can provide something to John.
Okay, great.
Uh, okay, can I get direction then, what to do?
Uh, I don't think we do anything. We, we, it's not a public hearing, so we don't continue it.
I know, but the question is, do we go ahead and endorse it?
No.
All right, thank you.
It's not in its final form. It sounded like John, um, was going to make some modifications to, uh, the A and R, uh, plan, um, from what's been presented, and then we would take a look at it next time.
All right. Um, great, thank you very much, Mr. Cavanaro.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, now we are going to move on to our seven o'clock item, which is, uh, the opening of a public hearing. The first, uh, statement I'd like to make is that Mr. Grady, who is the elected Planning Board member, will now step back, uh, and join the, the audience. And Mr. Coleri will step up and serve as the fifth Planning Board member during this discussion. Mr. Grady is in a butter to the One Pleasant Site, and therefore, um, uh, steps back in this case. So, Mr. Coleri, uh, uh, you are now elevated to participate on the board and to vote. Um, let me ask Mr. Callahan if he will pre- please begin the hearing um, by reading the notice as posted at, on, um, at town.
I don't have it, unfortunately.
Uh, okay.
I, I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting to read the public notice, but I said I don't have it.
Tom, I can read it, I can share it for you. Can you see that, Tom?
Yep, okay. All right, pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Forty-eight and Section three hundred dash twelve point four, three hundred dash twelve point six, and three hundred dash eighteen of the class of zoning bylaws. Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing via Zoom on Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, at seven P M. On the application of Paul Sheeran of Model Properties LLC for Village Business District Special Permit and Site Plan Review approved. The subject properties are shown on Cohasset Assessor's Map E five dash eighteen dash eighteen, otherwise known as One Pleasant Street. The application is for the raise and removal of the existing eight thousand forty-three, eight thousand forty-three square foot, single-story structure to allow for construction of a new mixed-use structure having a similar footprint, eight thousand two hundred eighty square feet of retail office and restaurant space, as well as the second and the third floor above with fourteen residential apartments. Copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are filed for viewing in the Town clerk's office at Cross Town Hall, Forty-One Highland Avenue, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, Tuesday, eight-thirty to seven, Friday, eight-thirty to one. Electronic versions of application materials can be obtained by contact and planning director Laura Lynn via email at allin@cohassetnews.com, or cohassetnews@. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the application should attend the virtual meeting at the town. Signed, Amy Glassmire, Chair Cohasset Planning Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Callahan. It is now seventeen fourteen P M., February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, and we will be opening the public hearing, um, for One Pleasant Street. Let me make a few introductory comments about this discussion, uh, and then we will proceed. And I will explain how the, this discussion will occur. The first point to make is that this is the first of what is expected to be a number of meetings. So this is not the, this is the start of a process, it's not the end of a process. Uh, and we expect, um, that we will see this, uh, continue before us, um, into the future. Um, the process this evening will be a presentation by the applicant, uh, of the proposed, uh, initiative. This will be followed by, um, the, uh, presentation by the town's peer review. When that is concluded, then the Planning Board members will begin their discussion. They will work on the basis of alphabetical order, and hopefully, in that process, they will complete their first round of comments. It's possible they'll want a second round of comments as a result of that. Uh, and then after the board has spoken, uh, Ms. Laura Lynn will read questions from the public. And, uh, there's two forms of, uh, commentary that are possible. I will let Ms. Lynn, um, uh, explain them.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I was multitasking. Would you like me to explain the public comment right now?
Yeah, please explain how the public will be able to communicate.
Thank you, yes. For members of the public, um, thank you for being here tonight. There's a question and answer function that you'll see at the bottom of your screen. What we're going to do is that you will ask, um, you input your name and address into the question and address for the, for the purpose of the record. You can input comments into that screen. Um, anything that's received throughout the course of the meeting will be sent to us in a file and distributed for the record and for the board. Um, at, we will, um, be able to promote people to allow them to speak, as was outlined in the beginning of the meeting. We do ask that people, um, don't repeat points that have already been made, if possible, and, um, we're going to allow, uh, three-minute max comments. So we're going to, um, again, try not to repeat things. Everything, um, that you say, again, will be on the record and recorded, distributed to the public record. So, thank you very much.
Um, I'll make one last comment, which is that, uh, if somebody, um, is, uh, desires to, to say something which has already been said, then this is how I will proceed. They will have one minute to make a comment. They will have one minute to conclude in that last minute. Um, I will, if necessary, um, terminate the discussion so we can move on. The reason being is we have thirty-eight people here, as well as fourteen panelists, and we want to be efficient and make sure everybody can be a part of the process, but also, we need to, to be able to get on to, uh, other issues. So with that said, um, uh, please, applicant, introduce yourself and your, um, uh, support team.
Great. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, my name is Jeff DeLeese. I'm with the law firm of Orinberger, DeLeese and Harris. I am, uh, the attorney for the property owner, Mr. Paul Sheeran Junior, who's, uh, participating in tonight's discussion. We're here tonight with Greg Morris, our site engineer, Jamie Callaher, our architect, and Jeffrey Dirk, our traffic consultant. I have been working, well, actually, let me just step back on the, on the, uh, notification that was just read to the public. There was a typographical error. The existing building is not a single-story building which is being raised. It is a, uh, a, a three-story building, okay? And I can, we'll get into that in, uh, greater detail. So I've been working on this project for about a year now. Uh, I am, uh, very excited to formally propose it to the town. Uh, my client, Paul, has been a lifelong resident of the town of Cohasset, and this is his chance to do something really special for the town and to enhance the Village Business District with a mix of much, you, much-needed residential apartments and, uh, commercial uses. Looks like we have a lot of material to get through tonight, and, um, Madam Chair has set out some rules. Uh, so I'm going to try and keep my initial commentary brief, so we can move on to the, uh, to the team presenting the project. Uh, it will be me first, uh, going over some of the legal aspects of what the board, how the board, uh, is required to, uh, consider this application. Then we'll move on to Greg Morris, who's going to review the existing proposed site details. Mr. Callaher, who's going to review the building and aesthetic details, and Mr. Dirk, who's going to review the traffic impacts. So.
Can I just let you know that Mr. Morris does not appear to be here at the moment? Uh, so, oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Thank you.
Uh, no, no worries. Um, so this property is located in the Village Business Zoning District. It is next to and across the street from, uh, municipal parking lots and just west of the tr- of the train tracks on Pleasant Street. The lot, uh, exceeds all area with frontage and lot coverage dimensional requirements required by the zoning bylaw and zoning district. The existing building on the property was constructed in approximately eighteen eighty, according to assessor records. Uh, the building complies with all yard setback requirements of the bylaw. It, uh, presently is a footprint of about eight thousand and forty-three square feet, a portion of which is three stories in height. The building uses contain a mix of retail office, restaurant space, and the site provides four parking spaces presently. Uh, the uses are, are busy. We have about eighteen tenants and multiple employees in the building with each of the tenants. The proposal is to raise and reconstruct the building. We would slightly increase the footprint by what I consider to be a relatively diminutous amount, about two hundred and fifty square feet larger than what it is. The building would be brought closer to Pleasant Street to blend in with the walking village neighborhood. The building would be reoriented on the site, uh, for purposes of safety. Uh, that would allow ladder truck to access all four sides of the building, whereas right now, the east side of the building is not accessible by a ladder truck. Um, the proposal is to provide a mix of commercial, restaurant, and office uses on the first floor, and seven rental units on the second floor, and seven rental apartment units on the third floor. The total number of bedrooms being proposed would be twenty-two. That would be two, eight, uh, excuse me, eight two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom unit. That would be two, eight, excuse me, eight two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom unit. We propose to increase the parking spaces on the site from four in number to twenty-one in number, two of which will be accessible for disabled persons. And the entire building, whereas presently is not obviously to code, to the current code, will be brought into full code compliance, including handicap accessibility. So, for tonight and this hearing, the framework for the planning board, how does the planning board view this and what provisions of the zoning bylaw are coming in under? Pursuant to the zoning bylaw, the planning board is the Special Kermit Granting Authority for projects in the VB zone, that's the Village Business Zone. We're requesting a special permit under provision, or Article twelve point four of the zoning bylaw, and a site plan approval under Article twelve point six. Under Article twelve point four, in order to grant a special permit, the planning board must determine that the approval would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or convenience of the community, and would not be adverse to the town's economy and environment. Section twelve point four A two of the zoning bylaw sets forth various criteria, which the planning board is to consider in order to ensure that satisfactory arrangements have been made so that the project would not have adverse impact on adjoining properties or properties generally in the district. Those criteria, in summary, are safety of the site, such as ingress and egress, parking, traffic, kind of general site, site plan type of stuff, traffic flow, fire safety. Additionally, water pollution and adequacy of drainage is looked at, signing, lighting, noise, odor, trash collection, buffering, adherence to dimensional requirements, and economic effect and general compatibility and harmony with the neighborhood. So, as far as, as far as the VB zone is concerned, and this particular property is concerned, Article eighteen of the zoning bylaw kind of contemplates that the property would be used for a mix of residential and commercial uses. And Article eighteen sets forth certain performance standards designed to ensure that the desired attributes of the zoning district are met. And some of those performance standards, and the team will go over and explain how we meet those standards, Florida area ratio, public benefit, such as low or moderate income dwelling units, minimum residential gross floor area for apartments. There are design guidelines, architectural compatibility, and historic commission review are all part of the performance standards. Stepping back, as far as historical commission review is concerned, we've already applied to them, and the board already has a letter confirming that the historical commission has no objection to raising the building, as the building doesn't have any historical significance. So, the zoning bylaw and the planning board guidelines also provide reduced parking requirements because of the proximity to the village walking kind of area and the municipal parking lots. And it also encourages that the front yard setback be brought as close to the street or the public way. Article seven point one of the parking requirements, specifically subsections K and L, require no parking spaces for permitted commercial uses, and one space is required per apartment, regardless of the number of bedrooms. So, this is a little different than what we use, what we're used to seeing because of its proximity to the village. The design guideline, and in any event, as I indicated, and you'll see, we're increasing the number of spaces from four to twenty-one. So the planning board has design guidelines, and I just wanted to highlight Section four point two point six of the design guidelines that deal with this particular location, calling it a well-suited area for development for combined housing and commercial activity. That provision provides, in part, that although these parcels are further away from Main Street, those lots with frontage located along Pleasant Street, which allow a combination of commercial and resident, will allow for a combination of commercial and residential uses. New buildings should incorporate the closed setback from the public ways that characterize the traditional streetscape elsewhere in Cohasset Village. So that just kind of amplifies that what we're dealing with here is a bit of a special and unique zoning district. There are not many, at least I'm not aware, of many applications under this particular provision that provide mixed uses. Before I turn it over to the team, I just kind of wanted to address two additional issues. One, Mr. Sheeran, being a longtime resident of Cohasset, understands that the town can benefit from a public, a public amenity, such as low and moderate income housing. And he has reached out to the Affordable Housing Committee, to a member of the Affordable Housing Committee, and the Elderly Affairs Board. And after discussions and consideration, he's amenable to designating a portion of these residential apartments is affordable for seniors, veterans, and other persons of lower or moderate income, and would be happy to discuss with the board any restrictions that the town might have a particular need for, such as veteran housing. So, in my experience, I've been involved, the board might recall, with Mr. Stasko's project on, on Route three A over at Stop and Shop. And that is an excellent example of a public amenity that is very beneficial to the town because it deed restricts twenty-five percent of the total number of those affordable rental units. And under current regulations, I think, kind of a neat aspect of what we're dealing with here is that when a developer voluntarily deed restricts twenty-five percent of rental apartments, the town is able to include all of the rental apartments in that development in its subsidized housing inventory, which has a significant implication. The town right now is kind of on a razor's edge as to meeting its, its subsidized housing inventory requirements. And if we meet the, those requirements, other properties within the town, large properties, who might otherwise be able to jam in a significant number of high-density for, have, public housing would not be able to do that in a manner that would allow them to offend the zoning bylaws and some of the other bylaws and regulations. So, Mr. Sheeran is open to deed restricting twenty-five percent of these units, that would be four units. And I think that's a great amenity. Additionally, I just wanted to point out public commentary. I reviewed the public commentary that was posted by Lauren on the town's website. I saw eleven letters of support by residents and businesses, and notably, one of the eleven letters, this is South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And so, I, I think that that is a testament to Mr. Sheeran's good standing in the community and his commitment to this particular location and property. So with that, I'm happy to have Greg Morris present the site, and then Mr. Callaher, the building, and Mr. Dirk, the traffic summary. I, I might want to add, I know that the chair has indicated that there is a procedure tonight. Jeff Dirk, our traffic consultant, has a, a commitment at another public hearing, and he will have to leave at eight. So if we can kind of shoehorn him in and try and at least get some initial questions and input from the board on traffic, that might be helpful. So with that, I'll send it off to Greg.
So I'll watch the time, and do you have any idea how much the transportation study discussion will take? So that I can watch the time, and if we have to stop on one piece and let that in, so he can go?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be longer than ten minutes. The reality is, is that the significant change here is the number of rental apartments that didn't previously exist, and there really isn't much implication from a traffic perspective of, of that. So, I would expect it to be a relatively short discussion.
Okay, so I'll watch the time.
Thank you.
Good evening. If I could share my screen and pull up a copy of the site plan. Can you, can you see the site plan?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. For the record, this is Gregory Morris, I'm a registered engineer from Morris Engineering. What I pulled up on the screen here, this is a copy of the existing conditions plan.
Can you zoom in on that a little bit? It's pretty small.
Yes, I will. This is a copy of the existing conditions plan. Hold on just a moment. There we go.
Thank you.
So as we, as we look at this, the property itself, located at One Pleasant Street, it's Assessor's parcel E five dash eighteen dash eighteen. The property line here is the bold black line. The property itself is approximately thirty-eight thousand two hundred forty-nine square feet, all of which is upland land area. Looking at the property, Pleasant Street is at the bottom of the screen here, on the bottom right-hand corner is Pleasant Street. It's bordered on the north by the Green Bush Railroad line. It's bordered essentially on the west-hand side by a vacant parcel of land on Smith Place, as well as it has frontage on Smith Place, which is at the top-left page. On the south, it borders parking lot owned by Town of Cohasset. The property itself, it is traversed by the Village Business District, as well as the Residence A zoning district. This line that cuts through the bottom corner of the, of the lot here depicts that zoning change between the Village Business and the Residence A zoning district. Topography of this lot, this lot is very flat. Generally, the elevations in here range at the high point along Pleasant Street at elevation eleven to a low point by Smith Place at approximately elevation nine point five. There were no wetlands that exist on the site. However, off-site to the south, there is an intermittent stream, the buffer zone to that being the dashed line that cuts through this portion of the site. That intermittent stream is a portion of the James Brook culvert system. It enters the culvert at this location off-site, intraverses through an easement through the downtown district, ultimately discharging off of Brook Street. The existing building here, approximately eight thousand forty-three square feet in size, there were four designated parking spaces out in the front that are striped spaces. There is paved access around the side, however, proximity to the lot line in the Green Bush Railroad line, which has a retaining wall along the edge of it, really prohibits any sort of emergency vehicle access around this building. Moving over to our proposed site plan, which is sheet three of the plan set, this depicts the proposed layout. What you see here in black is the delineation of the proposed building. It's largely in the same location as the existing, but you will notice that it has been rotated away from the lot line with the Green Bush line, and it has been pulled closer to Pleasant Street to bring it up closer to the sidewalk area into the, in the village. The new building footprint is slightly larger by point six percent, coming in at eight thousand two hundred and eighty square feet, again, being a total of three floors, the first floor being office retail space, second and third being residential units. With this layout, it does accommodate a full-size ladder truck access around the building. We have included, depicted here, the turning templates provided by the Cohasset Fire Department for access onto the site and access around the building, showing that. The parking that we're proposing, we're proposing a new parking entrance here on Pleasant Street. That new parking entrance comes in, in accesses ninety-degree parking against the building facade here. It provides two handicap-accessible parking spaces with a handicap-accessible access ramp onto the sidewalk. The sidewalk would traverse the front facade of the building and connects to the Pleasant Street sidewalk as well. There are parallel parking spaces on the opposite side of the parking lot here, basically along the lot line of the parking lot that the Town of Cohasset owns on the abutting property. In total, it provides a total of twenty-one parking spaces. The zoning bylaw for this use that we've proposed requires fourteen. So we are providing a total of fifty percent more than the minimum. Interior of the parking area, there are some landscape islands. You'll see a landscape island here at the end of the parking lot. You will also see that we're providing landscaping in this island, as well as along the lot line with the adjacent parking lot owned by the town. In the front of the building, between Pleasant Street and the building facade, this is proposed as a brick patio. The brick patio will be accessible from both the onsite sidewalk, as well as the Pleasant Street sidewalk. Utilities for the site include new water, electric, gas, and sewer service. Those come in on the north side of the building, depicted by these lines here. We also are bringing in a fire service. This building will be fully sprinkled. It'll be brought up to full fire code compliance, where the existing building is not. The parking lot will be serviced by a new drainage system. The new drainage system essentially consists of two catch basins, one catch basin located here, second catch basin located here. Those catch basins go into a storm scepter particle separator, and then they connect into the James Brook culvert system. The roof area for the building is being directed into a series of subsurface leaching chambers, which is what's depicted with this rectangular area. Those leaching chambers allow infiltration of water from the roof with any overflow going into the James Brook culvert system. We have filed with the Cohasset Conservation Commission. We've had our first public hearing with the Cohasset Conservation. We filed both a notice of intent due to the work within the one-hundred-foot buffer zone to that off-site intermittent stream, as well as we filed a full stormwater permit with the Conservation Commission. That stormwater permit documents the pre-development and the post-development rates in volumes of runoff from the site. And what it does document is it does document that in the post-development condition, we're not discharging any more water than what currently lists the site, leaves the site. It also includes TSS removal, showing that we're complying with removal efficiencies within the parking lot of any suspended solids, and it includes operation and maintenance plans to ensure long-term longevity of the drainage system at the site. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie Callaher with Acxiom Architects to go over the architecture of the building and the interior layout.
So just let me know, let me let you know that it's seven forty-one. If you have a time constraint to eight o'clock, would you prefer to turn to the transportation study first?
I think that makes sense, Jeff DeLeese. So Jeff Dirk, if you're available, why not review that?
Sure. Greg, um, could, would you mind putting the site plan back up, Greg?
Sure.
Sorry to change gears on you there.
Let me share a screen here.
Ladies and Madam Chair, and members of the board, and thank you for indulging my schedule tonight. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessa and Associates, and we're the transportation consultants on this project. So a part of this application includes a transportation impact assessment that we repaired in support of the development. And the, you heard Attorney DeLeese mention at the, at the outset of the meeting, the project itself, in terms of the net increase in traffic, is relatively small. The existing uses on this property The existing uses on this property, they don't generate a significant volume of traffic, approximately ten trips during each of the peak hours. So in the morning, in this area, the peak hour is between eight and nine, actually, it's a little bit later in the morning time period. And then in the evening, generally between five and six o'clock, the site produces about ten peak hour trips. The proposed development program is expected to generate somewhere between twenty and thirty peak hour trips. So from the standpoint of what Pleasant Street will experience in terms of changes in traffic volumes, the project's going to increase the traffic volumes by somewhere between or upwards of about twenty peak hour trips. So that's one additional vehicle every three minutes during those one-hour time periods I had mentioned. So it's not a significant increase in traffic itself. Now Pleasant Street in this area is twenty-four feet wide. It accommodates about two thousand vehicles per day. And peak hour traffic volumes are around two hundred on the roadway, so that just kind of gives you context. So there's about two hundred peak hour trips going by this site, and the project will increase that number by up, up to about twenty. So it's, it's a relatively low-volume roadway, and that's pretty characteristic of the nature of the uses on the road, which is as you get to the southwest of the site, it's primarily residential. And so it's residential type of traffic and following residential traffic patterns. There are sidewalks along Pleasant Street at the present time. There is a continuous sidewalk along the project side of Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street itself curves away from the project as you head towards the north, so towards the railroad tracks. So one of the things that we did identify as a part of our assessment was the need to do some vegetation trimming to the north of the project site. So basically, on the other side of the track, so it's actually within the town right-of-way, because the road curves away from the site, if you're exiting the property and looking towards the railroad tracks or towards the commuter rail tracks, there is some vegetation that grows into the sidewalk area that we've recommended needs to be trimmed. We did, as a part of your consultant's peer review of the project, they had asked that we identify where that vegetation clearing would need to take place. And we have developed a plan that we'll be providing showing where it is and the limits of that. And it's, it's essentially overgrowth into the sidewalk area that if trimmed back would provide the necessary sightlines. So that, that's an overview of our transportation assessment. We did receive comments from your peer review consultant that we will be addressing. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Because you need to leave, yes, please. Planning Board members, starting alphabetically, Clark Brew, do you have anything you'd like to ask? But you, we have to keep it short so that we can get through them and he can leave?
Well, the, the main comment is that you're moving the entrance and exiting from the site away from the, the train gates. So that if there's any queuing that happens, it would be of a safer nature.
That's correct.
And I wondered, this may be another question outside of traffic, but the, I'm not, the, the, the area to the east or northeast, that's proposed as a paved area just for the use of the fire department, is, is it going to be loading or unloading, or is there any parking? There's no parking proposed. Is it just a plank, blank asphalted area that, that's in the, in the, in the case that the, the fully sprinkler building catches on fire and the fire department needs to show up?
I believe that's the case, yes. I mean, we would not want anything parked or staged in that area just because, again, the, the whole idea of moving that driveway has the benefit you mentioned. It also has the added benefit of moving the driveway further away from that adverse curve from the standpoint of sightlines. So we don't want to place anything within that area there that would inhibit sightlines.
Sure, you know, and this is probably another, another question, but, but certainly with the building there and the train, right, adjacent to it, maybe some screening or something else that, that would be an issue outside of the traffic study. Those are my only questions and comments.
Tom Callahan?
I, I just have two, two questions, well, one question related to the traffic. Well, one questioner from the public asked, did this assume that Smith Place would be closed off on Pleasant Street? And then my question related to that, did your traffic study account for the planned development just up the street at the site of the ice cream shop? Which, which is adding, which is adding, you know, I think one, one or two businesses and a couple of residences. It's not, it's not a huge, not as close to the scale of this.
Yeah, so that, yeah, and that's a good, so I guess, starting with your first question. So the assumption was any access out the Smith Lane would be solely for emergency access and would not be something that would be, you know, used as access for the site or, or as a cut-through. And we've suggested that, you know, to, to the extent that that remains there, that it should, it would be gated or suitably, you know, signed so that it would not be for through traffic, and that it would only serve to the, to the extent that it would need to be emergency access if that was to take place. So what you see in the plan here is the intent to keep it as a gravel way, so we're not proposing to use that as any means of access other than potentially for emergency access. To your second question, so that, that project, as you noted, was relatively small and, and you know, I, what we did do is that we increased the traffic volumes in this area about half, one and a half percent. So that would account for, you know, any, any small increase in traffic that might be associated with that use that may travel past the project site. So that, that's how we did account for it, because we wouldn't expect that that project in and of itself, at least along this section of Pleasant Street, would, would result in any direct impact beyond that background growth rate.
Thank you. That's all I got. That's all I have.
Paul Caleri?
I don't have anything to add or questions, but I did want to just recognize that there were some comments or questions from the public that you might want to address before we lose the traffic study. That's all.
Great, that, thank you very much for that help. Eric Potter?
I was gonna ask the same question as Tom with regards to the ice cream shop, so I'll defer to the public. Let them speak.
Lauren Lynn, would you like to address this?
Certainly, thank you. So the question, one of the questions that Tom had asked on behalf of Chris Plex at Seventeen Pleasant Street has already been answered. There's a comment in the chat that I'll leave. It's directed toward our large home reviews for later on the agenda. And then we have a comment from Ann, I'm sorry, Virginia Brophy of Sixteen Beechwood Street, Cohasset. Marvel Properties LLC is required as a Massachusetts LLC to file an annual report with the Secretary of the Commonwealth on the anniversary date of the organization in the state, March seventeen, twenty fifteen. For the Secretary of the Commonwealth website, the annual filings for this LLC are two years plus, due twenty nineteen and twenty twenty are past due, and twenty twenty-one will be due on March seventeen, twenty twenty-one. For a variety of important reasons, I believe every company applying for a permit to work in Cohasset should be required to provide a certificate of good standing in order to apply to be required to main, I'm sorry, and, and be required to maintain that good standing throughout the life of the project. In this instance, Marvel Properties LLC would need to bring their annual filings up to date in order to obtain the certificate. And then a second comment, not sure if it's, if I misunderstood, but I think he said he's already gone before the Conservation Commission. Have the, have they changed the rules? It used to be that you could get, to not go before the Conservation Commission until you had already completed your application with the planning board, et cetera. Concom was to be the last stop, at least that's the way it was years ago.
Okay, I'm happy to answer those two questions for you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. On the issue of the corporate filings, we'll take a look into that, and we will make the filings, though not required to produce a certificate of good standing. We'll do it, and that's, that's noted. That'll be done before the next, the next meeting. As far as the second question with respect to conservation, with the regulation, the regulation is actually located in the Code of Mass Regulations concerning the Wetland Protection Act. And what it says is, is that the, the Conservation Commission shall act last. It, it's so you could, you could file contemporaneously, for instance, but the conservation hearing would be required to remain open until the closure of all other required hearings. And that's what will happen. Okay.
Can I just say, as an attorney, I second Anne's comments, since we're going to be issuing a permit to an LLC, it should be in existence, and Jeff knows as well as I do that after three years of missing annual reports, somebody downtown can push a button and un-register you. So just, I mean, it's not a major thing to take care of it because we're going to be issuing a permit to an LLC.
Yep, and it'll be taken care of before the next meeting. That's a great point. Thank you, Tom.
All right, so let's see, Eric Potter had any comments on, thank you, by, by the way, for pointing out the comments in the, the Q and A. Are there any comments from Eric Potter regarding the, the traffic study?
No, no comments.
All right, thank you. I, I just have one comment, which is while you are moving the parking and access to the, to the site away from the train, did you anticipate the, and when you did the traffic study, did you anticipate what happens in, in the, at the moments when there's a convergence of the train stop and traffic? And that would be at hours that are, when people are going to church, when people are going to dinner, where people are picking up and, and dropping off their children? Was that incorporated into your study in terms of the backup that will inevitably occur there potentially? And do you see that as a problem?
What it will do when, when that does happen, and you know, when the train gates are down, obviously, traffic doesn't move. So it's something that there'll be, there'll be a momentary delay. But I think that the, what'll happen is because the traffic volumes are so low on the roadway, and I'm, I'm sure you experienced this, it, it flushes itself out relatively quickly. So yes, there's a, there's, you know, a few minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, whatever it happens to be when the gates are down, or when there's some congestion in the area that, you know, traffic's going to be stopped. The fortunate thing with this use is it's, it's not a large traffic generator, so those, those instances will happen. But certainly to the extent that they do occur, the queuing or anything is contained within our site. And I think the important thing is that that's where the impacts would be. It's basically going to store the traffic in our site for anyone that wants to get out. Once the queue is cleared, then the vehicles will exit the site. So we do, we do anticipate that. I think the key thing is really making sure the site can store the traffic. You want to have a low-traffic generator near something like that. So if you had a high-traffic generator like a Dunkin' Donuts or something like that, that has a high throughput, that would be a whole different issue for this type of a use, because it's not a high-throughput use. Any, any delays that might happen can be contained within the site and then released.
So did you consult with the childcare center that's about a hundred and fifty feet away from the proposed project?
With regard to pickup and drop?
The volume of people coming and going and the, the pinch points at that. I mean, for example, if you're going to have people that are going to live in the residences and they're going to work, they're going to come out about the same time as people are delivering their children.
Yeah, what, yeah, what I suspect happens, especially when you have residential uses like this, is if you live there, you know. You look out your window, you note the times that that's going to happen. That's an existing business that's there. We're coming in as new, especially with residential units within here. And if I lived in the building there and I knew when the pickups or drop-offs are happening, you know, you, you tend to change your traffic patterns or travel patterns to avoid when those things are going to happen. And that, that's really what would take place. We wouldn't.
But I asked you a very specific question. Did you consult with?
No, we did, no.
Feet away from.
We did, no. The, the answer to your question is no.
Thank you.
Wouldn't have any, it wouldn't have any ramifications in terms of what our recommendations would be for this site. It really comes down to when those conditions are happening, realistically, what'll happen is if you're a resident, you live here and you know that, you know, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, there's congestion related to pickups and drop-offs, you, you alter your, your travel patterns, or you know it's happening and you accept that, that you're going to get stuck on that traffic.
Thank you. I, thank you. Any other comments from the planning board members regarding the transportation study introduction? All right, thank you, Mr. Dirk, and let's move on now to the discussion by the architect.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I am Jamie Kelleher, Registered Architect with Axiom Architects, and I will be going over just a brief review of essentially the aesthetic architectural portion of this project. I'm going to go ahead and start right out with some of our views that we created, some of our perspective rendered views, so that we can go ahead and just see what we think this building is going to look like. So if we all have this view on our screen now, this would be a sort of view of the building as proposed, coming down Pleasant Street from the village area, right, right across the tracks. As it's already been mentioned, one of the design moves that we made with the building was to bring it a bit closer to the sidewalk to kind of create this pedestrian environment. As you say, a traditional streetscape for that village atmosphere. And rather than bringing the building all the way up to the sidewalk, like you see right in the core of the village, we decided to leave sort of a brick patio space adjacent to the retail spaces that we were proposing. And this would be beneficial for, you know, bistro tables, you know, for a restaurant or cafe, or even, you know, some kind of a bookshop, whatever tenant might end up in that space. Having some outdoor usable space is definitely something that's desirable in the current times. And we hope that would be a nice amenity for the neighborhood and whatever businesses would move into the building. I'm going to go ahead and then just move to the next image, which comes around the building to, coming from the other side of Pleasant Street, gives you a little bit more of a view of the long side of the building that will be mostly seen. And as you can see, we have sort of a, a, a pedestrian sort of covered walkway that wraps around this front part of the building. These front spaces are meant to be sort of traditional retail, or like we said, cafe or restaurant spaces with storefront windows and have that relationship to the closest part of the sidewalk. And what we've done with the building with the first floor is sort of broken up the first level into different types of commercial spaces. And we've used that as an opportunity to break up the aesthetic look and the architectural look of the building. Given that this building is such a long, narrow footprint that we were kind of bound to, we felt that breaking it up with materials and sort of, you know, variations of the dormers would prevent it from becoming a very monotonous, boring type of apartment building that you often see. And, you know, our intent was to design something that had a very appealing New England style and something that fit in well with, you know, the village style. And so as we get down to the third and final portion, and I'll bring up the elevation shortly, the, you know, the, the, the final space is made up of some smaller office spaces, this middle brick portion that you see that has more of a townhouse feel, has first-level offices that are a little bit larger. So each, each of the first-floor uses kind of has its own appearance on the exterior of the building as well. And then as we've already discussed, the second and third floor containing the apartments, and rather than, you know, putting up a full three-story building, we elected to go for a half-story for the third floor to kind of bring that roof line down and, and be a little more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and the, and the architecture of, of the village. So next, what I'll do is bring up the floor, actually, why don't I bring up the elevation? So we can kind of stay on that. So the top view that you see would be that, that same view that we just saw in the perspective, giving a little more of a sense of how big each of these sections would be. This final piece is kind of, I guess I would say, a contemporary depot style, just to give it a little variation and kind of play off of the sort of train station area that we're in. What we're showing on this top elevation, the, per, per the building height of definition of the zoning, our official building height. What we're showing on this top elevation, the, per the building height of definition of the zoning, our official building height would be about 30 feet, 10 inches, measured from the average grade to the midpoint of the highest roof, and that's shown on the left side. On the right side, we're showing the, the building height to the highest ridge, which is about eight inches lower than the maximum of 40 feet, which is highest ridge being five feet above the max of 35 feet. So the building should fit nicely within the zoning height requirement. Then as we move down, we see the front and rear elevation, and then this bottom elevation represents the view from the railroad MBTA's side of the building. Although it won't be seen very often, we did make an attempt to keep that side of the building aesthetically pleasing as well. I'll quickly jump onto the plan view now. So as you can see, on the top, we're showing the patio area, the pink areas are two retail slash restaurant uses. And then these green spaces are different sized office spaces. The, the applicant has had great success with some of these smaller, you know, 200 range square foot office spaces in the current building. So we'll be offering the same basic, you know, sizes with this. We've got our elevator down on this side where we anticipate we'll have the residential entrance on this backside of the building, closest to where we would have potential parking there. Two stair egresses as required. And as we move up to the second and third floor, I look at the units, you see the blue spaces are the two bedroom units, and these greenish-yellow spaces are the one bedroom units. We have one accessible unit shown here on the second floor, very close to the elevator. And the the narrowness of the building dictated a sort of single-loaded corridor configuration for the apartments. So we took advantage of that by creating this sort of covered exterior corridor access, which allowed us to have nice natural light on both sides of all the units, which is something that we don't typically get to do when you have a double-loaded, you know, standard multifamily building. So we took advantage of that and allowed us to get a lot more natural light and come up with some much more desirable layouts for the units. As you can see on the third floor, we do lose a little bit of square footage due to the use of the dormers. But the layouts of the apartments are very similar to what we have on the level below. And so that should pretty much cover the the design aspects. So be happy to field any questions that come up and bring up any of the other images again, if we, if we want to see it.
So let me begin by asking the planning board members individually on an alphabetical basis to make their comments, beginning with Clark Brewer. Clark, you're muted. Thank you.
So I appreciate the work that the applicant and his team have done to represent a complete solution for this, for this project. Certainly, if it's possible to have 25% of the 14 or four units deeded affordable, then as a rental project, all units will count. I think that would be a great benefit to the town of Cohasset of the project or for, from the project. A couple of technical questions. The, I guess this is probably for Greg. Greg, the parking lot, the town parking lot to the, to the southwest of this site says Mass Bay Transit Authority. We may have talked about this at the preliminary go-round. My understanding is that's owned by the town of Cohasset. Is there some issue with the deed research for, for that particular parcel?
I, I will have to look into that. You're absolutely right, though, that it was originally owned by the MBTA, and I, I believe it was to be conveyed to the town of Cohasset. I will make sure that that, that that had happened, and I will update the plan if that's necessary.
If you could find out, if it hasn't happened, or there's something that the town needs to do to make sure that that gets squared away, that would be great to know. The other question is, there's a parcel, a long skinny parcel to the northwest of your site. And I see from the aerial photography, it's all paved. It looks like it's maybe used as parking for the little commercial building on Smith Place. Who owns that? 150 by 40, some odd shaped lot.
That's, that's actually part of the MBTA layout for the Green Bush Line.
That's owned by the MBTA?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, guys. Night, kiddo. I love you. Sweet dreams and do what mommy says, all right? Thanks. So the, the traffic impacts don't seem to be significant, but I guess I wondered my comment would be generally on the, on the open, on the open corridor, I wondered if, you know, because of snow removal and getting the light in, I think is great, but, you know, at certain times of the year, you'd want it to be closed, and other times of the year, you'd want it to be like open and comfortable, right? You know, like, like right now or the last, last week, you'd, you'd want to have it closed. And I wondered if there's, you know, large glass panels that could be slid or screened, screened instead of the, the fully open thing for, for winter, winter use. You know, you could always build snow melt cables into the, into those decks, but it seems like it's a, it's a maintenance issue and maybe a design issue one way or the other. I don't think there's a perfect solution necessarily based on what you've, what you've got, but getting extra light into those units is great. Just wondered if that should be more closed in. And also, this, this whole area to the, to the northeast, it seems like a lot of unprogrammed parking space for the, for the, for the benefit of when the building's on fire. And I, and, and like I said, it's, you gotta fully sprinkler building. So I wonder if there was something else that could be done there, or maybe a little bit more building footprint in that direction, or some kind of screening to the, to the train tracks. Now, now the, the, the building, you know, the, the art center building and provides screening from the other side of the railroad tracks of this, of this building or of that elevation. But, you know, you know, you're, you're, you're walking in and out of your, your apartment, and the train goes by, and everybody looks at you. You know, maybe this is a question for Jamie that's a follow-up on this. So the building code allows you a footprint area based on the type of use. And if you have fire department access on all four sides, you get a bigger area. Have you planned this building so close that you need that northeast access area for the fire department in order to make your minimum footprint as required in the, in the, the use table and area calculations in the building code? Do you require that?
My general understanding of that is that we, we wouldn't have any conflict with any kind of area, but we've, as far as I know, kind of taken as, as much as we can in terms of the width of the building, just based on the parking on the, on the one side, and then, you know, getting the, I mean, this is, this has been a really tight fit, and I think from the original intent was really to try to keep the footprint very similar to what was there. So I don't think that, that hasn't really necessarily been, you know, looked into all that deeply at this point.
Okay, so when you do, you know, you're, you're beginning work on the, on what, you know, uses and what areas are allowed, the factors of whether it's fully sprinkled or not allows you an increased footprint, as well as do you have fire access on all, on all four sides? And there's a factor. So my, my real question is, is that access really required? And if, if, if not, would tweaking the building a little bit closer to the, to the, to the Green Bush Line, gi- give you the ability to pick up some parking lot or straight-in parking instead of the parallel ones on the, on the lot? I'm just sort of thinking out loud, and this is, you know, our first hearing. But it, it would also allow, you know, the potential for, I don't know what, what kind of tenants would be back here, but, you know, a barbecue area? I just don't, I, I just don't know. I just, I, I think the sea of asphalt, where it, I question whether it's 100% necessary.
So Clark, maybe I can jump in. I can tell you that when we conceived of this project, one of the first questions that was running, running through my head was, was that I, I assumed that the board would want to see access around the entire building. That's just generally something, for instance, I recall dealing with that on another project up by Route 3A. And so the short answer is, we will check with the fire department to see whether or not that's required in light of the fact that the building is sprinkled. One of the concerns that we also have had on this is that even though we far exceed the parking requirements in the village business district here, we weren't certain as to what the board's appetite would be as to whether the board wanted us to create more parking. And so in, you know, the project is what is before you now, but should, should, should the fire department tell us that it's not necessary to have access back there? My question to you is, what would you like to see? Because, to be honest, you know, additional parking, I think, is something that is beneficial, you know, to the public as well as to the, you know, to, to the property owners here. So
Yeah, well. Look into it, and we'll see what the options are. And talk to the fire chief about it. Obviously, they'd like to have that. But point of order, Amy, Chairman Amy, instead of getting all my comments, I don't know if I've gone over five minutes, but should we get our peer reviewer to make their initial review comments before the rest of the board, or?
Yes, we can do that.
I, I mean, I don't want to take Tom's position out of.
Well, you, we, you'd gone over your five minutes, and I needed to move things on. So I think it would be quite appropriate for the peer review to speak to the project. Thank you.
I'm sure. Thank you. I'll just introduce our peer review team quickly. We have from Weston and Sampson, Jim Reardon, Darren Kirkgin, and I believe Jeff Santa Cruz. Yes, Jeff Santa Cruz is here as well. So I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren. I'm Jim Reardon. I will share my screen now. Just a moment. So if I'm the for some reason, the the item looking for isn't showing up. Hold on just a moment. Try it again. I'm going to do it this way. Can you all see my screen at this point?
We can.
Okay, great. All right. And hopefully you can see that presentation view now. Okay, great.
We're seeing the two-piece part, Jim. Can you go up to your display settings and switch which is viewable?
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, that's working right now. It's always a little hard to tell with these things. All right. So thank you very much. Again, I'm Jim Reardon. I'm the project manager for this peer review. And we'll be going over several items related to it and introducing the peer review as well, just sort of giving an overview. As Lauren mentioned with me tonight, we have Darren Kirchman, who is the technical reviewer, and Jeff Santa Cruz, who will present on the transportation element. So Jeff and I will present. So going over this fairly quickly. So this, of course, is the approximate location, give a quick overview of the site. Street view photos from Google Earth showing the existing building, James Brook Building. The proposed development. And then just briefly, I'd like to note that we put together an initial draft review. We're still in the process of reviewing the items that were presented in that review. We had just a few days to, to start the review and wanted to get you something, get the planning board something that, that they could at least get a sense of our thoughts on initial peer review. So there are several things that we're going to update with that. Some of those, some of those additions and updates are in process now, and we're going to add some sections as well related to architecture and landscape architecture and other areas. Updates and revisions will be clearly indicated in subsequent review memos, so you'll be able to see those. And, you know, some of the key points that we would bring out right now is that the initial peer review noted, indicated that this was in the Harbor Village District. Of course, it's the village business district, and that'll get fixed. And expanded discussion of the special, special permitting has also been, is in process of being added. So key topics under the initial peer review include bylaw compliance, really focused on the special permit, bike plan layout in public realm, primarily at this point focused on storm water. More of the site plan in public realm will be built in as we move along, and traffic and circulation, third element. Our review criteria included criteria from your bylaws, of course. Section 312.6, which is the zoning bylaws. Section 223, which are the regulatory bylaws and include requirements for storm water. Also for storm water, of course, we looked at compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. Section 312.4, which is special permit, and section 318.1, which is the zoning bylaws, special permits in the village business district. We also, of course, included industry standards, sort of our own best professional judgment and state compliance issues as those arose. But these four items are really the primary things we looked at, criteria. I know there was a little bit of discussion just a couple of moments ago about the building height. The materials that we saw indicated a building height of 39 feet four inches. It didn't show the midpoint of the sloped roof. If that could get added, that would be helpful. And if could provide a roof plan so that we can allow us to confirm calculations and to make sure that the roof is as expected. I know this is primarily a peaked roof, but Um, I know this is primarily a peaked roof, but um we want to be able to see that and uh be just positive about our review. Uh, special permit item. So under section uh twelve point four, uh I should note that the parenthetical references um on the slides are to the sections of the peer review memo. Uh, the idea is that you can uh reference those back. Um, of course, our summary is really just focused on the action comments in the peer review memo. Uh, we also noted in that memo, um, when there were when we reviewed for an item that was in the bylaws and it was in compliance, um, we made that note in the memo. We didn't go through that in the PowerPoint. We didn't want to, you know, belabor those kinds of things and really just for the PowerPoint of focusing on action items. Um, one area uh in the, or there are several areas in the special permit that that uh are required to be addressed. Um, and these allow for the planning board and us as your reviewer to make a positive finding uh about the project. So they include uh the ingress and egress. Um, and we'd ask that you take a look at our comments under section three point three, stopping site distance and three point five driveways. Jeff will go over these in more detail. Um, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them now. Uh signage, um, the applicant didn't indicate if they were doing a replacement sign or not. If that's uh being considered, uh, the applicant should provide side and details uh if such a sign is being proposed. Refuse collection, this really relates to uh the dumpster. And we would ask that you refer to comments under two point three point two and three point two. Um, well, Jeff and I will review those in a little more detail later. Um, so uh information is needed from the town for positive finding uh related to uh health, zoning board of appeals and Conservation Commission. We understand uh from the applicant a few moments ago that uh there is an NOI that's been provided to the Conservation Commission NOI application. Um, if that could be provided to us too, I don't believe that was in our review materials. That would be helpful. Also noted, I believe, uh, it was mentioned that a letter was sent to the Historical Commission or maybe a letter from the Historical Commission. Um, we need this information again to make a positive finding uh because of the age of the building. Uh, so if that could be provided to us as well, that would also be helpful. Wetland. So, um, again, please provide the notice of intent. Note that the um that there, the indication on the site plans, and I think it's on the third sheet of the site plans, notes that the wetlands were delineated in two thousand and sixteen. Um, the state requirement under the WPA, the Wetlands Protection Act is that wetlands are delineated within three years. Um, so those will need to be updated. Um, erosion control. So uh please show on the location uh the location of the erosion controls such as the hay bales and check dam, uh slope protection plans that are indicated in note five uh on the site plans and provide construction details as well so that we can review the constructability uh and be sure we understand the erosion controls fully. Roof runoff, please uh provide some additional information on roof drainage, uh show the appropriate surcharge piping. Um, also, I believe you noted that there was a uh full stormwater application that had gone in with the NOI. Um, we'd like to review that also. So if you could provide that to us as well. Um, we made note of the operations and maintenance uh in particular. Um, we did not see an O and M plan uh as part of the materials that we received. And of course, that's required for all best management practices. Catch basins uh and drainage piping. So provide backup calculations to demonstrate the compliance with the maximum design velocity. Um, those backup calculations uh were part of the materials that we received, and those would be helpful in making sure that we understand that the uh design velocities will work or work appropriately for the piping. Uh, update the detail referencing the lever on hoods. Um, this company's been out of business for a little while, and so those um that type of hood is uh not available in the market anymore, needs to be updated. Um, consistent pipe material references. So there are a couple of places in the plan set where one type of pipe material was referenced on one sheet, and then maybe later on in the details, uh different type of pipe material was referenced. So we just uh clear those up. Um, provide uh proper diameter pipes um in compliance with uh local standards, state standards. And provide um proper schedule drain pipes. There are a couple of places where HDP E uh pipes were indicated that perhaps should have been concrete or uh something of that nature. So if you could check through those, that would be helpful. Uh, the infiltration system, provide backup calculations on the sizing of the infiltration system, the elevation of the groundwater table. Um, we need those to, again, understand that the uh infiltration system is going to work properly and is sized properly. Uh, ensure a proper minimum cover or restrict traffic. So there's an area uh where the infiltration system is installed, but it appears uh that there is vehicular access uh over the top of it. Uh, and the proper minimum cover was not provided for that. So e- either you need to provide that proper minimum cover or maybe bury the system a little bit deeper if um uh flows will allow for that or restrict traffic. I think those are the two options. Uh, the storm scepter. So um it indicates uh control of total suspended solids and nutrient removal, but the backup for that wasn't provided. Um, so if that could be provided, that'd be helpful. Uh, detailed note should be should be used to clarify. Note two was not provided. Um, and then there was a call-out box that indicated if needed uh at an inlet. Um, and that uh call-out should be re- removed because that inlet is being used. Um, so that's that's just a, I think, a minor clarification. Utilities. So all the utilities should be shown on the plan, particularly the uh utility connections. Um, we want to make sure that that they make sense for constructability. Um, so if those could be provided, that'd be helpful. Uh, show a water service detail with the pipe materials. Transformer pad. So uh if you could provide some detail on the transformer, transformer pad, it's indicated in the plane view, but I don't believe there's a detail of it. Um, we need that to ensure that it's appropriate. Uh, concrete dumpster pad. So that's currently located, appears to be over the top of the infiltration system. Um, that's really not appropriate for the top of an infiltration system, so it should be set back from that a bit. Um, pavement thickness, um, we'd recommend a four-inch pavement uh pavement thickness for the parking area. I believe you folks indicated three inches. So yeah, if that could be updated for, that'd be good. Uh, parking requirements. Um, so correct of parking spaces calculations. Um, there's a comment that we made on that in section three point one of the memo. Uh, fire truck. Whoops, I'm sorry, Jeff. I am stomping on your part of the presentation. I'm having a little trouble seeing the top of it. Um, Jeff Santa Cruz will be talking about traffic and circulation now.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeff Santa Cruz. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I ended up taking a look at the traffic study. Um, there are a couple of minor things we noted. Um, the site plan actually calls out that there's eight thousand two hundred and eighty feet uh square feet of office retail, and the traffic study only showed six thousand two hundred square feet. So that would indicate if there was some difference, there might be a little bit more uh site-generated traffic than what the study originally included. I don't think it's a significant amount, but the study certainly should be updated and uh so for the record that the correct amount is shown. The other thing, the reason I bring up the study is uh uh under this section is also, we noted that the uh traffic impact and access study has the incorrect uh reference for parking standards. It did not actually use section seven point one K and L for the retail apartments in the VB district, which do uh change the parking requirements from the standard. Um, so those should be addressed and just make sure that the study is consistent. The other thing we noted is uh we've talked a lot about this fire truck access, and uh we had some concerns with the actual layout on the site plan. One, the the truck turns in and seems to stop, doesn't continue along the back of the building. And when it restarts at the back of the building, the way it's laid in actually looks like the vehicle's starting from a stop with the wheels hard turned to the left in order to make it back around to the building. In addition, from the elevation views that were provided by the architect, it appears that there is some sort of overhang canopy on that back west-hand portion of the building that are less than twelve feet in height, and that certainly would be in conflict with a fire truck. If you are going to be proposing the balconies and they're not going to be of a higher nature, then we would recommend that they are shown as a dashed line on the plan when you are referencing the fire truck uh turning templates to make sure that there is no conflict there. It just seems really tight back there, so I would request that you take another look at those and coordinate with the fire department to make sure there it's acceptable to them. The other thing was the location of the dumpster makes it very tight for that fire truck to get around the back, and it actually has to squeeze tighter closer to the building as it is exiting around back through the main parking lot. Perhaps the coordination of relocating that is part of getting it off the top of the infiltration system away from the building will actually uh help facilitate that. Um, stopping site distance, uh Mr. Dirk did mention a little bit that they had received our comment on the stopping site distance. Uh, they had indicated that there was a certain amount that was available around the corner to the northeast and that they would uh recommend trimming the vegetation to increase that. Uh, I would like to see, or we would like to see a uh a site plan with that sightline triangle shown on for intersections stopping to verify that the tree uh uh coverage that they're talking about needing to be trimmed is indeed within the town's right-of-way and does not reside within MBTA or private property where special permission would be needed in order to trim those trees. The other thing we did notice is that uh there is some landscaping adjacent to the driveway and one of the elevation views for the um architectural showed a sign. Would also want to make sure that those sightlines do not cut through the anything that's going to be higher than the um a a three-foot height in that area that would restrict sightlines looking to the left or the right in this case, um especially back toward tracks. Next, Jim. Um, sidewalks. Now, it is noted in the uh the bylaws that a a sidewalk is required in the VB district along the front edge of the site. Today, that sidewalk is actually part of the driveway. Um, we would indicate that the uh it should be clear on the plans that they're going to raise and put a vertical granite curb across along the roadway and recreate an actual sidewalk surface and that all driveways will include um an ADA accessible. The one that may be a little tricky and we'll want to see some more details is the ADA, current ADA accessibility at the train tracks. There is a ramp that comes up off the train tracks and then goes back down. Need to see how you're going to accommodate that at that um driveway. Um, we also noticed that it's unclear for us on the plans whether or not the driveway on the eastern or northeastern side of the property was an ingress and an egress. We see a fire truck access drawn, but there's no signage, nothing else to indicate that residents will be prevented from turning in or out. In probably not as much of a concern because it's not a site distance restriction, but certainly if they're coming out of there, given the location of the proposed transformer, the arms for the um train tracks and vegetation could severely le- limit site distance around the corner. Um, so please clarify that, and if it is going to be a restricted access for residents, how that is going to be maintained. The other, excuse me, on that transformer pad, uh if that is going to be some sort of access, um, you should consider some sort of ballers or other screening to prevent any damage occurring to that during snowplow operations or vehicles uh moving in and around that. So we'd like to see something there and make sure it can be, you know, safe and not get damaged. The um screening of ground-level parking is in the design guidelines. It's recommended that um they have uh it on the building side of the parking, but for the parallel parking spaces, it's unclear from the site plan which whether some sort of screening was provided between the sidewalk roadway and those first parking spaces. And uh lastly, the ADA parking spaces that were included in the plan, it appears from our calculations that the slope of those yeah is close to four point eight percent where two percent is required by um ADA guidelines. So that should be looked at and clarified uh to make sure that it can meet those requirements. And with that, Jim, I think it should be back to you. You're muted, Jim.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, and just one concluding slide. So um uh West End and Sampson will continue to discuss and review the project with the town, update the memorandum uh with the additional information as requested. We'll add in the uh the other sections uh that I mentioned earlier and um, you know, uh make revisions as necessary. So with that, I'd I'd like to uh uh thank you for the opportunity to present on this and uh opener, open it to uh any questions that folks may have for us. Uh, Madam Chair, I think you're muted.
It doesn't appear that we have any comments from planning board members right now uh for the peer review. Um, and let me say that going forward, I want to note that it is eight thirty-eight. Um, we're now about uh thirty-eight minutes over the timeframe that we had originally scheduled for the introduction of this uh discussion of this project. So what I am uh recommending that we do is the uh remaining planning board members that were unable to um say uh general comments uh of five minutes or less. I'd like to go through those, and I wish to turn to the community conversations that um we know are sitting waiting patiently for us to address. So with no further ado, I'd like to turn to Tom Callahan, and I am going to be very um tight about time. So five minutes and I'll ring a bell.
Okay, um, I mean, just preliminarily for tonight's purposes, my my comments, I mean, mostly I was concerned about inclusionary zoning. I'm very happy about what I'm hearing about that tonight. Um, regarding the finger of land that goes out on the east side uh or the west side towards Smith Place. Uh, Mr. Plex mentioned that, you know, we talked earlier about the emergency gate. I'd like to see that. Um, I I'm questioning, is that shed going to survive? And I'd really like to see the gravel removed there because I the design guidelines are new to my experience in working with, but I noticed they do encourage some green space on the site. And I'm wondering if we couldn't just make that whole useless finger of land towards Smith Place green. Um, I noticed another public comment about the building being close to the street. It appears the village, the design guidelines encourage that. But uh, you know, to the extent any kind of planting could be done, so it doesn't just look like a just a brick wasteland, and I understand about sightlines. So I'm thinking about things maybe in in planters and not, you know, that can be controlled in terms of growth. Um, other than that, you know, I um I guess though, the other thing I noticed in the design guidelines is the comparison of height over existing height. And one resident asked about that. Uh, how much taller is this building than the existing building? Because it seems our design guidelines put a limit on how much taller it can get. Anybody want to answer that? Mr. Morse? Hello?
I I I don't have an answer on the existing height of the building. I think that is something that we can get and we can provide.
Yeah, I just I just noticed that in the, even in the design guidelines that the board passed in two thousand and nineteen is there is a suggested limit on how much higher than the existing space it can get, even though you might be in compliance with the bylaws requirement. Um, my my only, my last question, again, going back to inclusionary zoning. Um, is is maybe this is a question for Jeff Delisi is is any other developer approaching you about compliance, uh using your project to provide affordable units for the another project? And and I'll and I'll say this, I don't care. And I'll say this, I don't care, except that both projects' requirements would have to be met, and that would be more than four units, presumably could be more than four units. So I don't care, but I'm just curious and just with a reminder that the compliance requirements for both projects would have to be fully met.
Before we go back and forth, I think it would be better if we can get all of the planning board members' comments.
Yeah, that's fine.
On the table.
Yeah, that can be answered.
Just for the sake of timing and to make sure that we're able to provide time for the community members. So thank you, and Paul Cleary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the team did a great job with the presentation and also excited about the inclusionary zoning, especially coming from the Cohasset Affordable Housing Steering Committee. So that's exciting for us to hear. But otherwise, I think, you know, the peer reviewer covered it and others have commented on things that I was thinking, and they've all been addressed. So so far, project looks nice. I love the design of the building. And best of luck, we'll be here to help and work with you.
All right, thank you very much, Eric Potter.
Yes, I think, let's say, project looks nice, did a great job actually designing it. I think my biggest concerns would lie with the overall height of the building with regards to what's facing Pleasant Street. I know it's a long building going pretty far back, but right on top of Pleasant Street like that, that would be one of my concerns, how that's going to look in when it's finished. So I would like to see how high, how much higher it would be compared to the current building that's there. I know it's going to be right across the street from Eight James', and there's going to be another building going in there. So it's pretty tight as it now stands. It could, it could get even more compressed when both buildings go up. I definitely would think that what Jeff said about the parking in the back, if that's not a space that's going to be used, could come in handy with regards to approving a project like this. Have going over those tracks daily, I can tell you that it is tight. And if there is a successful business, which we hope there is going to be with residents there, having additional parking is is something that's going to come in handy with, you know, regards to access use and most importantly, safety. You know, and that my last point, just, you know, at the opening today would be, you know, with the building being close to the street like that is the overall safety of it. And I know there was a traffic study that was done, you know, with the new building that's going to be going across the street at some point. And, you know, with not knowing exactly, you know, what sort of commercial use is going to be put down on the first floor, you know, it could get busy over there. So I'd want to pay particular attention to the how we can make it as safe as possible, especially if there's going to be people congregating right outside and relatively close to Pleasant Street and to the railroad.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to add a few comments before the public weighs in. I didn't notice any storage that was going to be provided for residences, and I would presume that people are going to need lockers or some way by which they can store personal effects besides what's in their apartments. Did I miss that? If not, you can address that when we get together again. I request that there be a, an extension of the traffic study to talk with the major uses around the site, the childcare centers and some of the other facilities because of the traffic. I hear what the traffic engineer says, but I also know that when we went to reprogram the parking around the common, it was a very big deal in terms of being able to ensure that parents could get children up in and out easily. And I don't feel that that's been accounted for. At the very least, the people that are most likely to be affected by the additional density should be consulted just out of courtesy to see if there are problems they could identify and then they could be solved. In terms of the HVAC, I didn't see where that was going to be located, and I'm concerned about noise, both in terms of residents that live there as well as residents around the area. So that would be something that I think is important to look at. In terms of the parking that is currently going to be unscreened, it's also going to be uncovered. And, you know, looking at the size of the roof and looking at the extensions of the roof, one wonders whether or not there's opportunities for solar to be placed on the roof for energy generation purposes. And I would say that it's wonderful to have the the building very close to the edge of the street, but if there's going to be children that are going to be actually in that general patio area, there's going to have to be something that protects kids from accidentally running into the street. That can be vegetation, that can be various other objects that people use for urban design purposes, but I don't see that being open as being a safe configuration. So those are just my introductory comments. What I'd like to do now is to turn to the public's comments. And let me say just for the public that is listening, this is a pretty standard way in which a meeting like this goes. We have a procedure by which we've got to go through the various parties. We usually address the applicant first. We then move either through a peer reviewer, through the planning board members, and then we get to the public's comments at the later date. And the reason why we get to the public comments at the later date is because often the questions that people have are answered in that process of deliberation between the planning board members, the peer reviewers, and the applicants themselves. So it's not because we don't want to have you involved in the conversation. It's just we often answer a lot of questions, but it takes a while to get them out. So Lauren, would you like to take over and draw the public in, please?
Certainly, I will. Just quickly before I get to the public comment, I just want to make a note for the record on two items. At the beginning of this public hearing, there was noted that there is a typographical error in the public hearing notice. The reason for that was actually that that typographical error was in the application. It had been, that information was extracted and used for the public hearing, but we have since had an addendum to the application that's been filed and is on file, so that's been corrected now. And then the other item is that the, it was mentioned that there's a letter from the historical commission. I do not have a copy of that on file, so I will reach out to the applicant and historical commission to get that for the record and distribute that for all to see. So I just wanted to note that. With that, I'm going to get to the public comment. I'll start with, it's Virginia L. Jensen, 542 Jerusalem Road. Questions for the, oh, I'm sorry, this is still, this is still a large-term review. Please disregard that. Chris Plax, 17 Pleasant Street, would the builder commit to closing access to Smith Place except for the emergency use keeping in with the traffic study included with the application? And then also from Chris, how does the proposed height compare with the existing building and the heights allowed by our zoning bylaws?
I think, Lauren, if you don't mind, I think it would be, I think it's possible for us to go through the comments and then allow the applicant to respond to the comments after we get them all out, rather than going one by one because the exchange just takes up time.
Certainly, understood, thank you. I have Ken, who hasn't given a last name or an address, I'll read the comment. It's, this large three-story structure looks like it's placed right up against Pleasant Street. Seems like the goal is to cram as much leasable space in the area versus building something that's aesthetically pleasing. Concerned about parking. Anne Brophy, who gave her address earlier, as 16 Beechwood Street. Very nice presentation. This inquiry may not be within the scope of this venue. It seems during COVID period, many businesses are considering abandoning or reducing their broken mortar. I'm wondering if market analysis has been done regarding the development of the office space. I'm concerned that the builder goes to the expense and trouble of building offices, and then will not be able to rent them out. This would not be healthy for the builder or the town. Anne continues to say, my only other comment on the design is that I love the outside sitting area. Unfortunately, it's unfortunate it cannot be reconfigured somehow so that it's not at the corner close to the train. Is there any possibility that could be shifted to where the sign is instead or some other alternative? It wouldn't be fun to sit there when the train goes by. Overall, it seems to be a nice project. With that, there's no other questions in the chat at this time. If there's any other members of the public who wish to speak on this, I'd ask that you put your name and address in at this time. Otherwise, we're going to close public hearing for this, for this portion of the agenda.
All right, so let me just comment that the question of height cannot be answered at this point, but the applicant has indicated that they will get back to us with that information, and we will report that in the next hearing. And I don't, and I think that the applicant also has to be able to answer the question about Smith Place, but I'm not sure that's a que, that's a question that can be answered with an immediate answer right now, but I'm just guessing.
All right, thank you. I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to try and rapid-fire some responses, recognizing that the board has given us already more time than was allotted, and you have more matters on. On the issue of height, agreed, we are going to come back with the comparison. I think that what I heard from Eric was that the the primary concern on the question of height is the facade facing Pleasant Street. Is that true, Eric? We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll take a look at that. On the issue of access to Smith Place, this is a, this is an issue that has kind of jumped out to us. I know one person said close off access, another person might have had a comment about maybe dedicating that to green space. The shed is there. We do intend to keep the shed. The shed has a useful function for the property with maintenance issues and so forth. The question is, is will we rebuild the shed within its footprint and height? You know, just, just because it's an older structure and we just want to beautify it. But we'd like to keep the shed on the property. The issue of Smith Place, though, is kind of a funky issue because, for instance, Madam Chair, you raised the issue of traffic issues with respect to maybe adjacent businesses. If we're going to seriously consider mitigating any effects that may be present with respect to those issues, the use of Smith Place kind of comes into play. Same with the issue of if we're trying to get some more parking on the property, covered parking or whatever for residents over there. One of the concepts that we were kind of kicking around, and I'd be interested just to kind of, you know, just kind of throw it out there, was we recognize that Smith Place is something that I think that our butters would probably prefer us not to use. And we're sensitive to it, but we're wondering if maybe we would use it simply for one way for the residents only, maybe with the gate at the back end, just to alleviate any of those potential traffic questions and to allow maybe for some use, utilization of that area for some additional dedicated parking just for the residents. Because even though the bylaw doesn't require parking for commercial uses, it's pretty sensible to include parking for commercial uses. And it might be an interesting feature maybe to put parking back there. So it's something that I wanted to throw out as a discussion item. I know we're not going to address it this evening, but it'd be nice to get some direction from the board on that particular question. On the issue of landscaping and buffering and plantings, one of our tenants is Amy Martin. Amy's one of the most talented landscape design people locally, and she's been commissioned to further address that issue, and we'll have some answers on that for you. On the issue of market analysis and COVID, we have not done that, but I can say that the use of the building is very robust, and our tenants have expressed desire to continue within the building. So we don't really have much concerns. And the particular area within the village is certainly a sought-after area. As far as relocating the patio area, I tend to think that's something we're disinclined to do. I do recognize the fact that it's up against the train, and we need to think about ways to enclose that in. I think that's a very constructive comment. We'll look at that. HVAC, noise, we'll, we'll, we'll address that issue. Solar energy, I guess we'll address that issue. I know that we have not considered that at this time, or at least I haven't. Somebody asked me if we were approached on the issue of inclusionary zoning with relation to other projects. I can tell you I personally have not been approached, but I know Mr. Sheeran has. And I think that there are preliminary discussions at this time, and I'm not certain how well the two projects mesh with one another. And so no one has asked me to actually analyze that, and so therefore I have not. Let's see. I think I hit storage areas, we'll check into that. Traffic study, we'll talk to Mr. Dirk about that as well. I guess as I think about your comment, Madam Chair, on traffic study, I am, I am a little ambiguous as to how we would actually for real address that. I mean, so if we analyze the businesses in the area and we understand, for instance, what the pickups and drop-off times are, I don't think we'll be restricting our residents and our patrons from accessing our property during those timeframes. I think that the best thing that we can do to address that issue is to utilize Smith Place, and I'm just not certain what the appetite of the board is for that. Otherwise, we very much appreciate your positive comments and the fact that you've recognized that we've put a lot of thought into this project. We've tried to come to this board with a complete application. We've tried to anticipate your questions and concerns. And we're going to continue in very good faith to try to answer all the questions and the issues raised by Weston and Sampson to better the project for the neighborhood and the property owner. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. DeLisi. If, in the interest of time and the fact that we have two continuing hearings that we need to get to, I'm going to request that a motion be made to continue this hearing at a later date. And in order for that to happen, Ms. Lynn needs to give us a date and a time. And I think it needs to be coordinated with the applicants so that there's sufficient time. So the next time we get together, we have the maximum amount of information that we need. It'd be better to be a week later than to try to rush it and then have to go over and over and over again.
Very much agreed. So starting from a month out, what are the dates that you guys are looking at, Lauren?
So our next available dates for applications, starting a month out, would be March 24th, followed by April 14th.
So recognizing the chairman's appetite, I think that, I think that we can hit the 24th. However, I would ask that the board vote to continue it to the 24th, and we would commit to notifying the board within two weeks prior to that meeting whether we need additional time, if that's fair.
Lauren, is that, is that all right for us?
Yes, I think that's, that's an agreeable plan forward. I would suggest then for a time on March 24th would be 7:30 PM.
All right, thank you. So then I would add Clark Brewer.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to the 24th of March at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, can I get a second? Can I get a roll call vote, starting with Clark Brewer?
Mark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Cleary, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. Thank you all, and I'm, I'm going to ask that all of us stand up for a minute before our blood pools in our feet and we will be unable to walk home. So I don't care, I do care if you do it. I'm going to do it because I sit for about 20 hours a day and it's going to kill me. So let's just take a two-minute break and, and we'll reassemble.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, peer reviewers, you're very helpful.
You're welcome, thanks for having us, and I hope you have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, are you okay if Cindy Amara, our special counsel's, I don't know if she needs to stay for the next hearing? You know, Lauren and I will follow up with Cindy on this project.
If she was only here for this, for one pleasant, then, then yes, she can be. If she was only here for this, for one pleasant, then, then yes, she can be relieved of duty and. Because anything that would require counsel can be addressed in the daytime.
All right.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you all. I'll be in touch soon. Good night.
Thank you.
9:03. Okay.
Hey, guys. Thanks for letting me go on and on and on for so long without, and you guys had to wait. On that last hearing.
Yeah, well.
If I had thought, if I had thought that the peer reviewer really should go before me. Before talking, I. I didn't, so.
So don't you worry, Clark. That won't happen again.
Good. Oh, good.
It won't. Believe me, it won't.
Perfect, perfect.
All right, so let's see if we. Have everybody present. Let's, should we wait for Jen?
Jen just messaged me. She'll be back in a moment.
Okay, then let's just wait for her.
We can proceed without her. She's gonna, she's gonna be a minute.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda. Is the reopening of. Two public hearings on two sites. The first site will be Windy Hill Road number four. And the second site. Will be as described here, Windy Hill Road Lot 32 advertised as 630 Jerusalem Road. Each one of these has to be opened individually and resolved individually. And we will be hearing from the applicant. We will, we have no peer review on this. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's not a standard practice for large home reviews.
Okay, and so we will then go into. A discussion of the planning board members. We will then go. To public comments for the first. Site and then we will make a determination on the first site. Then we will open up the second. Public here or continue the second public hearing and we will carry out. Our, our process essentially the same as the first condition. So it is now 9:06. And we are reopening the hearing for the. Application for a large home plan review filed by Eames Capital Partners LLC. The subject property is 41 Windy Hill Road. If the applicant completely identify what the plan is for who will be speaking first and then. How do they, their perception is of how this is going to proceed, that would be very helpful. And, and let's begin.
Certainly. Thank you, Board. Yeah, so we're gonna.
You, you said 41 Windy Hill. This is 4 Windy Hill Road?
No, I said 4 Windy Hill.
So it's Lot 31?
That is.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so. I'm Andrew Roman, the owner and applicant, along with my partner Sean Richard, who's also on the call. We have with us Jeff Hassett from Morris Engineering. And then John Teriyaki from Teriyaki Architecture Designs. To go over the revised. Edits that we had after the last meeting. So I think we're gonna start off with Jeff Hassett to go over. The revisions to some of the site plans.
Great, thank you, Andrew, and good evening, everyone. I'm gonna keep it fairly brief on this one with the revisions because they were pretty minor. The two revisions that we made were. The wall in, in the front yard, we reduced the height of it from three and a half feet to three feet. To ensure that it complies with the zoning requirement. And then also the other change was in the zoning table in the top right corner of your plan. We added the, the building coverage and the lot coverage. With which both do comply with those requirements. So thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Can we in the public see the new site plan that you just referred to? I mean, we may have seen it ahead of time, but the public, can you screen share it?
Yes, I'll share it.
Thanks.
So the wall I refer to is right here. It's a three foot wall and then the zoning table is in the top right corner.
Old man can't see.
How's that?
Yeah, I want, I want the public to be able to see it too, so I assume they can see all of this.
Why don't we move through this and I have a feeling we'll be coming back to some of the diagrams?
Thank you.
There are no other questions, I can. Start speaking on the architecture, John Teriyaki, Teriyaki Architectural Design. I'm gonna share my screen to. Briefly go over the additional building height information that was requested. So the average grade was computed by Morse Engineering to be 20.4. And the building height measured to the midpoint of the highest roof, which is the shed dormer back here. Is 32 feet, four and a half inches. The requirement or the maximum is 35. And the top of the ridge height from the average grade. Is 34 feet, 10 and a half inches. The maximum allowed is 40 feet. So. Just wanted to briefly outline those. And we did submit these to Mr. John Howland, the building inspector as well. Had a brief conversation with him to confirm that the methodology we were using. Was agreeable. And he said that it was and follows the current zoning bylaw. But if there are any other questions on that, I'm happy to elaborate further. Also, we did put together a massing study. I'm gonna share my screen. This was not submitted or is not submitted yet to the board. Because we've been working on. The massing and the accuracy and the representation of the structures. This is overlaid over a drone photograph. To address some of the questions about. The, the mass relationship of the structures to their context. And to the intersection of Windy Hill and Jerusalem Road. Although this is. An approximation, this, we feel like the scale is, is quite accurate. Wanted to share that with you tonight and see if the board had any questions.
I gotta tell you, from the site plan and now this visual, this just looks like it's more than 20% lot coverage. I'm sorry, just.
The site plan is the accurate document to refer to regarding site coverage. And that the numbers were submitted by Mr. Hassan.
The numbers don't match the visual. The visual does, it looks, just eyeballing it, it looks greater than 20%. It just doesn't. And this makes it worse.
This is just a representation of the building massing. It wasn't intended to replace the site plan. The site plan can be referred to for accurate lot coverage information. This was just to give you a sense of the massing, the three dimensional massing of the structure. In, in common, in relationship to the context of the buildings around it. We thought that it could be helpful to, for the board.
Did, did you happen to simulate? The view from Jerusalem Road looking up at the structures or across from the pond? So that it is possible to see what the, the scale effect is?
We have not done that. The elevation of the building, the, this elevation in particular here will be the most visible from that intersection. And since the building is rotated. As seen on the plan, the main mass of the building. To address that intersection, that will be the most visible facade. So it would be quite similar to what's seen here. Except it's set back as noted on the site plan. Let me just zoom in here. This dash line right here is the required 30 feet zoning setback. And you can see that the diagonal portion of the building is set back quite a bit, and I think this is something that Mr. Brewer touched on as well. The fact that we rotated the building. It allows us to set back, set it back even further. Than what is required, which is what this dashed line is right here.
So let me ask, we want to let you. Complete the presentation or the addition of the information that you would like to provide. So let's do that first and then we can get into the details.
That sounds good. If there are no other questions, that was it regarding the architectural component for this project. I believe that that's pretty much it. There was one other plan, Jeff, the combined landscape plan. I'm not sure if that's. Something we should briefly talk about. We put the two landscape plans together.
Yes, I can pull that up. For some reason, I'm not seeing it on my end, which doesn't help. Right, so here's the, the combined plan. The lot we're talking about at this point is the lower lot, Lot 31. And. At this point, there will be no additional wooded areas to be cleared. And you can see pretty extensive landscaping around the perimeter, creating a buffer. And it's a number of shrubs as well as trees, including red maples, white cedars, red cedars and pin oats. To go back to the note about coverage, while John was speaking, I just did, did do a quick check. They are correct. The. The area of the roof is 3,156 square feet. If you divide that by the lot area, you get 16%. Then you have an additional 846 square feet. Of driveway for a total impervious of 4,002. Divided that by the total lot area and it's 20%. So I, I can confirm that that is correct.
All right, so let's go around the. Excuse me, planning board members for individual comments. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, you know, I, I guess. The first question is, what was the methodology? This is probably to come up with the. The average grade within 10 feet. Was it? That, that was satisfactory to the, to the billing inspector. Can, can you just?
Clark, I can address that. This, this is a figure that I prepared. I, I do this for just about all of the new single family home projects that I'm involved in. And. Here, it shows the locations where I took the average grade and then you can just, you can see the math at the bottom.
Okay, so you just took a bunch of points within that 10 foot. Area?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I, I know, I know your regulations don't specify how many points, but I try to take enough that you get a good representation.
Well, it's a fairly even slope. You know, it doesn't have like a big bulge in one corner or the other. I, I wanted to ask you about the, the patio, whether the patio area is in your. Lot coverage calculation.
It, it is not, it is not because it's a pervious paver patio.
So it doesn't count at all, even though it's a patio?
No, but if it were to be included. We have another 10% to work with, so.
Under by enough, okay. And I guess one. One comment as a, is, is an architectural one. You, you've got sort of a colonial with a farmer's porch across the front. And two. Medium sized gable dormers on the front. And, and it's probably the gable dormers that. If they were scaled down by 70%, it could still have the same window. But they, they could probably, probably be less like imposing to the, to the intersection. And if, if they were sort of scaled in to the, to the, to the middle just a little bit, you know, by maybe 10%. That would, oh yeah, thanks. That, that would help sort of, I think with the proportions, they don't necessarily have to line up with, with the window grouping. The center of the window grouping below because they sit in a field. And that's just a proportional and sort of scale because those, those dormers sort of take on the, the most sort of. Blooming scale over the street. But that, that, that said, I think that's an issue. The side garage, the proportions of that, the other. The easterly side, I think that, that, they all look fine. That would be my suggestion for. Proportioning the, those front dormers down a little bit, but the, the rear elevation. The rear, the rear elevation's got a full shed dormer on the, on the, on the backside and it's basically a three story. Height elevation. And I, I know it's sort of set up as a bonus room and it's a part of your calculation. But, but the rear elevation needs some help. It, it's, it's, you're gonna have the front of your other new house. Looking down and staring right at this 20 feet above it and, and. It, it's not like this looms over that house because the, the house behind it looms over it. But it's, it's. It's, you know, you've got some banding across the back of this, but it, it, it really needs something else. To help break up the scale of this three story wall. Those are, those are my main comments. I think they, they submitted light bulbs and, and things like that. Those were. Those are my main two comments. The front, front two dormers and that full shed dormer on the back. There is an opportunity on the back, I think, to, to break up the scale of that three wall area. But, you know, I'd like to see what other planning board members think.
All right, thank you. Tom Callahan?
All right, I'll just make one set of comments for both projects. I, I first want to thank all the members of the public. Who wrote to us. And I encourage you to stay involved because there's to be some follow up on this. Some of you mentioned a number of things that. We should not allow to happen on these sites and. The problem is we don't have the bylaws to do that. One in particular was tried four years ago. It's coming back this spring, so I encourage people to get out and support it. This particular bylaw is not what we're making this decision on is not like the one we just did for the village. We don't even have the ability to say no here. As I said at the last hearing, I'll say it again. I don't think the letter and the spirit of section 305.4 C1A and B are being met here. I think this project is telling us how much we need to do about controlling site work that's on. I think this project is telling us how much we need to do about controlling site work that's undertaken before permit is even issued, even applied for. I think this project's telling us what we need to do about land alteration. And it's also telling us we need to reform this large home review process because we can't say no to this project. All we can do is condition it. When we get to that point, I have a motion to make to approve it with some conditions. I encourage, I just ask members of the public, understand the limitations we are dealing with. But to encourage you to stay involved and help us make the changes that we need to make going forward.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go to Paul Grady.
I'll address both these projects like Tom did. I'm interested in ledge removal. I'm really interested in what the Tom folks have had to say about it. And I'm assuming that my Tom's word that we can't say no, well, I want to find out about ledge removal. I want to find out about scenic roads. I want to find out why something overpowering is going into a spot like this. And I heard, I think it was Hassett, say that we're removing three truckloads. I'd also like to revisit, Tom, what you said about a very little used bylaw that doesn't permit that and why we're not using that bylaw. And then that's what I'd like to find out.
It permits it for the building footprint itself.
So any amount of ledge is allowed to be taken out of there?
Yeah, if it's if it's a part of the construction. I mean, that that bylaw for for earth removal was a was an anti-quarrying bylaw. Essentially, that's what it what it's for. It's antiquated and and probably inappropriate now. But the scenic roads bylaw, which which apply applies only to the work in the public way on Jerusalem Road.
And it only applies to the removal of trees and stone walls.
Well, it's been clear cut over there already. That's a given.
That's my point that we seem to allow an awful lot of site work in this town, including clearing, which the anti-clearing bylaw from past that role addressed. But, you know, I wish John Howland was here listening to this, but.
He maybe should be here because irregardless.
Now, now, I I'd like us to to speak one at a time and in order. It's Paul Grady's moment to speak now, then I want to go to Eric Potter. And I have my own comments and we can go back again. But please recognize what it is that we can comment on and and comment on that.
Well, I'm commenting on what what we've, the input that we've received from Butters, neighbors and concerned citizens of the town. That's what I'm commenting on. I'm commenting on the ledger rule because I want some understanding as to why a law is in place that we can enforce. Now, Clark seemed to have set me clear on that. And what's the purpose of a scenic road again, if it doesn't remain scenic?
So it only regulates disturbances in the public way as it relates to tree damage or removal or wall removal. So it's very specific.
In other words, it makes this board very popular with the public.
We don't control that, that, that's a general law. We don't control that. So let me turn to Eric Potter and then we can come around to me.
Thanks, Amy. Yeah, I think that this is really highlights the problem that we have here with the planning board in in large home review. We spend a lot of time on large home review. And in the five years I've been on the planning board, I don't really know the benefit of it here. I I think that what Tom points out is really what the planning board should be focusing on. And that's not with reevaluating, you know, how to enforce a large home review, but in evaluating the antiquated zoning bylaws in town with regards to some of the things that allows developers or builders or homeowners to come in and do things that are not necessarily in line with the vision of Cohasset. And by spending significant amount of our time essentially acting as a design review committee to to you know, look at these large home reviews. I don't really know what the benefit has been over the last five years. And that time could be well spent looking at some of the bylaws that need to be reworked and replanned and put in front of the, you know, the town meeting so that we can get something in place that allows, that aligns with what the vision is of the the citizens and what everybody wants as opposed to just continually reworking one particular large home review bylaw that really doesn't address, I don't think, a lot of the larger issues here. So that's, that's, that's really my position on it. Really, where I stand with regards to even this project.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to ask the architect the about the the side side yard, the side boundaries. John Hanlon and I measured the the margins and you've got about a foot on one and about one point five feet on the other. So it's easy to make a mistake. It's easy for something to happen in which that small amount of distance is not only invaded, but potentially breached. And the only way to make sure that nothing happens is to actually scale the house down rather than having it spread to the distance that it is. So you're really pushing the limit of the of the actual setback, side setbacks in an extreme way. We've never seen, I have never seen a setback which is so close to the edge. And and from the standpoint of the public and also from the standpoint of the planning board, it makes us uncomfortable. Because accidents happen and things then extend beyond the the space that they are required. So is there any any thought of actually scaling the building back? So you you have no wiggle room on in terms of the side margins. I mean, we measured them in the office and it was really clear.
John, do you mind if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So agreed that the setbacks are tight. We have a minimum of one foot of of extra room to the setbacks. This project and any other project where the setbacks are tight, we have the survey crew stakes it out for excavation. Once they dig the hole, we we come back and we we stake all the footings. Then they pour the footings and we stake the walls. As soon as the forms come off, we do an as-built plan and we submit that to the building inspector. So I like to encourage all my clients to give us at least an extra foot of wiggle room. It allows for, with that type of survey, you really don't have the human error, but it allows for it. And it also allows for, say, the corner boards and the siding. We'll go as close as six inches to a setback, closer than that, we're not comfortable with.
Yeah, but but just think about what what you're saying. You're going to the absolute maximum limit. And when you think about that, you, it's, it's really very explicit as to what you're trying to do. So it's not about aesthetics. It's about trying to maximize the the space that's encompassed. And from the standpoint of of just mobility around the space, you're you're pulling, you're you're just making things so tight. And and I think the recommendations, at least my recommendation is going to be that you make that that margin larger. That it that from the standpoint of of the the building and the setting, that margin is is too small. Clark Brewer?
Yeah, Paul Colery, even though he's he's not voting, because we have a full board, he should be able to make any comments or have any thought, make any comments and and express any thoughts on the project.
Indeed. Paul Colery?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Madam Chair. Clark, thank you. I don't really have any comments to add that the other board members have left out. I mean, I think the setbacks and in the buildable envelope is set by the bylaws that we have. And unfortunately, that's what we have to go on. I don't know that we have, I mean, we can make recommendations, sure. But the setbacks of the setbacks and the buildable envelope essentially is the buildable envelope. And the allowable lot coverage is also indicated in our bylaws. So like others have commented and, you know, clearly, there's been a lot of issues in the town of Cohasset over the last few years about different projects getting built in different parts of town. I think that you know, people show up and participate in town meeting and and, you know, we put forward what we think is a collective group from the planning board and other boards around town. There's multiple boards around town working on other things. And I don't want to get off topic, but I want to point out that what we can do is what we have to work with currently. And so until those changes happen, you know, we'll just have to act accordingly. So I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Jen Oram?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's okay, I just wanted to, so just for the public, because we've had so much public feedback and there has been a lot on Facebook about this particular project. But the chair and Lauren and I met this morning. My position with the town is Assistant Director for the department. And John Howland was here earlier. However, we ran over so long, I think he eventually went off. But he was here for one pleasant and was coming for this and has spoken with the applicant. But the one thing I wanted to mention for the, a few things I just wanted to to double back on with for the the public is that that the history of this lot and other lots in town, these particular two lots that I'm not going, this goes on with a lot of the projects that the people are sort of lumping together. These lots were laid out in the eighties in preparation for zoning bylaws chaining with the intention of them someday being buildable. They've been assessed as such for years. That said, the lot size is smaller than would be, but everything else has to conform. The only reason I mention that is they were not buildable for a while until sewer came. And then the planning board is held to rules and restrictions and laws that they have to follow. And and so that's just important for the public to realize that these these decisions are done, are governed as Tom has said, as Clark has said. And we're getting a lot of questions regarding the eleven point one, that's the the removal of ledge, correct, Tom? You know, we're getting that in the comments as well. And I don't, you know, we could ask counsel, but I think some of that monitoring of that ledge removal could be a condition. So I just wanted the public to know that the board is aware of all that, but also that we spoke this morning and and that we are, you know, and that the zoning bylaw working group is working on much of this. You know, looking, really looking ahead. So there's a lot of work going on and like they, so I just think it was important because I work on that group too. But I wanted to put that because Amy and I had talked about mentioning that before, and I think we just kind of skipped to opening it right away. And I thought it's important to mention. So I appreciate the time and the platform.
Thanks. Thanks, Jen, for for reiterating that in our comments. I mean, essentially, in other situations, we are able to come to an accommodation in an instance like this. But there's a, there's an understanding that there's a possibility of some recognition of reduction in size to better situate the project in a setting. And that's just how in a situation like we're faced, that's how, that's the extent to which we have the ability to negotiate is to ask the possibility of something taking place. Eric Potter?
Just, it was just very brief, Amy. That's exactly, you made my point there exactly. I mean, if we don't like the building setback to the height of buildings and the ledge removal, instead of worrying about landscaping, design and lighting and the light thrown off a large home, it would be excellent to spend time taking a look at those things so that we can enforce that. Because how can we enforce, you know, that's the point of a bylaw. If it's a fifteen foot setback and they go to fourteen nine, you know, then then they're not violation, violation of the bylaw. So I think it kind of goes towards the point I'm trying to make, the overall point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. Paul Grady?
Are we going to be able to hear some public commentary? I'm kind of interested in that. So we can get some opinion as to what's being done over there.
I'm going to take Clark's comment and then we will do that because we have another hearing we need to continue.
Yeah, I I I understand that there's a frustration where, you know, we can't deny we can only condition or approve, approve with conditions or approve as is. And, you know, I I guess the, it's a, it's in a way, it's a beautiful sort of windswept ledge with an even grade that's that's extreme. It it seems like it would be a good site for one even bigger house than than this, either of the houses that are proposed, perhaps than the two houses. But if it conforms to the requirements of zoning, I I don't think it's, it doesn't seem fair to say, oh, well, we want you to change it anyway. Although if there's something that's reasonable to ask of the applicant, something like landscape buffer, or I made a suggestion of tweaking the dormers. Something specific that is is actionable, tangible, that we could certainly make those as conditions. I remember a former planning board member used to say, well, you know, we don't deny, but but we can make the conditions as difficult as possible on the applicant. I'm not in, I'm not in favor of that here. But that was the approach of former planning boards. And that's, that's those, I've made all the comments that I that I think need to be made. If you want to take public comments, that's fine.
Could I respond briefly before the public comments, if you don't mind, to Clark?
Yes, you may.
Clarkson, Amy's comments. Regarding the the front dormers, I think those changes are definitely doable. And even the rear elevation, Clark, I think we can reduce the size of that shed dormer on the sides and also set it in further so that it doesn't read as as flat. And we can look at that separation trim that you mentioned that separates first and second floors and make a bigger gesture there to break up the massing.
The banding going across.
Correct.
And I think that would help, especially because, you know, you're marketing to a neighbor that doesn't exist yet.
That's true. So we can definitely do those and we don't think that's going to impact this project negatively. Regarding the setbacks, twelve inches or a foot of breathing room, just based on all the other projects we work on, you know, that's a very healthy margin. There is no requirement in the building code, I mean, a building, the bylaws to leave a buffer. They only require a number. And we think that a foot is an adequate buffer, especially because Morse Engineering is going to come back with their instruments and do a specific survey to pin all the corners of this foundation. This is not going to be done by tape measure. It's not going to be done by eyeballing. It's going to be done based on Morse Engineering's instrument survey located footprint. And it will be recorded again after construction for an as-built, which I believe is a requirement for the board as well. So I mean, I hope that gives some reassurance that those margins are not going to be exceeded. So I just wanted to make that final comment.
Thank you, and thank you for the previous comments about the potential for adjustments. So at this point, I would like to ask board members whether somebody would like to make a motion regarding the the status of where we are in this hearing.
Public commentary.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, public comments first.
I'm sure they have lots of things to say.
So Lauren, can you tee up public comments?
Yes, I will. I'd also like to remind the public, please input your address and your full name into the comments. We can't particularly take comments from individuals who are unnamed or anonymous. So I'm going to start from the top. Virginia Al Jensen, five forty-two Jerusalem Road. Questions to the chair, are either Windy Hill proposal. How has this land been taxed in the several years, buildable or non-buildable? Does the zoning allow this plot to be broken into two lots, once divided? What's the allowable size for a house in this location? Will the house be built on ledge? How many days of rock drilling will be necessary to build the house? I ask because of the decibel level of rock. Drilling can disturb migratory birds on the pond and residents of the area. How will parking be handled during construction of the project? I ask because this section of Jerusalem Road often has a lot of bicycle and walking traffic. I'll also note that later on, same individual, thanked Jennifer for her information. Katie Dugan of a hundred Black Rock Road. The massing diagram shows the drone view. The reality is the vast majority of the community views will be from Jerusalem Road, looking up at the buildings. The simulation needs to be Jerusalem Road up Windy Hill Road. Katie Dugan goes on to say, planning board, it might be helpful to recognize that there is a new zoning bylaw working group, which reports to your committee and the master plan implementation committee and is working on issues raised by Eric Potter and Paul Grady regarding the residential. Raised by Eric Potter and Paul Grady regarding the residential zoning scale and land alteration issues. Next, we have Amy Bernicker, six sixty-two Jerusalem Road. This rendering indicates many trees that you have already cut down. Is that correct? Uh, next we have Pat Moran, uh no address here. Very concerned about groundwater regarding ledge removal. This house is on the adjacent lot of the next discussion, two large houses. The amount of ledge taken out is enormous between these two adjacent house gets water and cellar now after rains. These two are together no matter what. Who is going to guarantee that the groundwater will be disturbed and water will find its own way? Into our cellar? Question mark, question mark. Thank you. Laura McGlynn, I live at the building at six forty-six Jerusalem Clifton condominiums. The house is. A historic house, once part of fifty-five acre estate owned by the Baker family. I'm concerned that all the blasting drilling will cause damage to the foundation of this old building. Has anyone looked into this? I've been told to take pictures of the foundation and all the walls. We have the same ledge literally in our basement. So this project frightens me. I've been told we need to inform our lawyers. I have many more concerns, but damage to our properties is the top of my list. Amy Bernicker again, as I'm asked in my written letter, what is the edge of the building, the proper distance to street pond? Virginia Jensen, it's five forty-two Jerusalem Road. The conservation committee has limited rock blasting to one day to one large home. How can this be limited? Rock blasting is detrimental to migratory birds in the neighborhood. Laura McGlynn again, ledge comment. And then um. Again, it's not, I don't know if this is a first or last name and there's no address, but a Brophy has input a couple of comments. Um, I'll just read one. Yes, I did see. Uh, I'm not sure what this is referencing to, but would like some more discussion about. Limited ledge remove removal. Uh, they can't believe the houses, the house limit is six thousand. And that is all that we have in public comment at this time.
Just just so you know, Anne Brophy's comments were about the old removal bylaw and I had answered some of them to try to give us a. Pointer and direction. So that's what those last comments she was referencing.
So I just want to make sure that that the reference to six thousand is not a reference to the size of the structure because the structure is not six thousand square feet. Is it? Is it the volume of the of the ledge removal that's six thousand?
No, it's it's one of the it's one of the triggers in the large home review bylaw. It's it's thirty-five hundred square feet and there's, I don't have it right in front of me right now, but. It's it's just another one of the triggers in addition to the thirty-five hundred square feet.
Okay.
For large, for large lots, you can go up to six thousand square feet or ten percent of the lot size.
All right. Um, and and Lauren, could you um please read Mr. Carroll's comment into the record?
Yes, certainly. That just came in uh after we, after I concluded last time. Thomas Carroll, this house is completely out of scale of neighboring homes. Our home is directly across the street at one Windy Hill Road and our home is twenty-nine hundred square feet.
So would it be okay if I added a little information on the ledge removal for this property?
Yes, I'm sure that would be of interest to the public.
So so the property generally slopes from the rear lot down towards the intersection of Windy Hill and Jerusalem Road. And ledge, as you know, is relatively shallow without crops here and there. So water that infiltrates into the ground typically runs on top of that ledge in that direction. And the construction of the these houses won't change that that flow pattern. As far as the damage to a budding out um structures. In this case, I've been informed that South Shore Blasting will be doing the work and they're fully insured. They do most of the work, the blasting work in this area. And part of that procedure is firstly hire an independent company to do a survey of all the properties within two hundred and fifty feet. They then apply for a permit from the fire department. And then during the blasting itself, they're using a seismograph, which is attached to the nearest buildings in order to measure any any vibration. And I know they've also informed the owner that they're going to drill more, a tighter pattern of holes. So that they can use less blasting material. So that that's really the the truth. It'll be done by that company, South Shore Blasting, that I'm sure you've seen around town. As far as the amount of ledge to be removed on this lot, the lower lot. The house has been cited at an elevation to minimize the amount of that ledge to be removed. So the basement, if you're looking at the house, the front of the house, the basement is only two and a half feet below existing grade. And at the rear, it's six and a half feet. So there there is an outcrop of ledge right in the middle. But test pits were excavated right next to it where they got down about five feet. Which is deeper than the depth of the basement. So I'm I'm conservatively estimating about a hundred to a hundred and fifty yards for for that house. When we get to law thirty-two, they have made some concessions on the full, the size of the full basement in order to minimize the ledge removal. Because there is one specific area that could be a crawl space and significant reduce significantly reduce it. And then if you, um, at at some point I can show you the landscaping plan that shows the current tree line. And then those additional areas to be um where trees need to be removed.
Let's see, I think I saw um uh Lauren, would you like to read um the public comment in in that was presented just recently?
Certainly. Uh, Thomas Carroll again, how will the ledge be removed? Blasting, pile driving? We're concerned about damage to our home and our glass sunroom. And then Virginia Jensen, five forty-two Jerusalem Road, our home is nearby twenty-four hundred square feet.
Paul Grady.
Is that all the commentary there is, Lauren? Because I have more in the packet that I printed up.
Well, that's those are the comments that we received in the question and answer from the the um members that are in attendance right now.
Oh, all right, because I was reading a heck of a lot more. That's why I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so I'd like just a comment about uh. Jeff, can you estimate what the volume is going to be when it is removed from the site, both of the sites? And how many truckloads you anticipate of ledge removed? I I happen to live on Howe Road and I'm very familiar with the blasting company who is an excellent company and they do a good job at what they do. But I so I but I just think it's important for the public to understand the volume of material. That is potentially going to be removed and the only way we can estimate it is by talking about how many trucks leave the site.
Sure. So law thirty-one, the lower lot, um, I said a hundred to a hundred and fifty yards. So if I take the average one twenty-five, that's about eight, eight trucks. And then on the upper lot with the reduced amount of ledge removal, it's down to um for the house of a hundred and sixty-five yards, which would be ten trucks. So eighteen trucks total, but the majority of that material will be used onsite. It's not going to be trucked off.
All right. And the second comment that I'd like to make, since I live on a site that's had two major ledge removal experiences is. That it's not just that the ledge is broken up and the water can move in different directions. It's that you strip off all of the vegetation that keeps the water on the surface. So you end up with surface water coming off of the the landscape as a result of denuding it of vegetation. So it's it is let it it can make its way along ledge um cracks. It also um is diminished or it also is increased in terms of flow by the fact that you've removed the vegetation. We have another comment in the um uh uh Publix.
Two new comments now. Um, Pat Moran, six forty-six Jerusalem, there's a school bus stop on that corner, great disruption and danger with the trucks, et cetera. Does someone address that? Uh, and again, Brophy, this is a different Brophy than had previously input comments, um, so I can't confirm. Exactly who this is, but I, he just said that he was drilling below the basement floor. In other words, there is space between the floor of the basement and the remaining ledge. Paragraph D specifically states that the quantity cannot exceed that actually displaced by the portion of the structure below finished grade. So there should be no space. The ledge should be the basement, in my opinion. And then just as I was reading this. Thomas Carroll, can you address the concerns raised in Amy Bernicker and John Guyer's letter of two twenty twenty-two, two twenty twenty-one? To Madam Chair Glassmire. And I'll state also, I'll add that that was a letter that was distributed um in advance at this meeting to the board um for the record.
I have to to respond and say that I don't have the letter um up. On my screen right now, so I can't really respond to the request for information.
I mean, it's very detailed, uh, you know, in a long letter, I I. I'd be glad to go through it quickly, um, but. You know, I think some of my comments earlier that, you know, all of these things that is uh, sorry, then. Bernicker and Mr. Guyer have written, and Mr. Carroll. Are all great points, but it points out some of the. Things that are missing from our existing bylaws rather than things that we can specifically do here. To influence this project. It's up to the board. It's up to the board if you want to go through it. And we also received a very detailed email. Ms. Al was the other day. That might be worthy of reading to the record as well.
I think that should be introduced into the record.
I mean, Amy, uh, Lauren, do you have the ability to um screen share? The Bernicker Dyer letter?
Sorry, I'm on mute. I um I wasn't prepared to be sharing those documents live, so I'm gonna have to connect into my virtual connection. It's gonna take me a few minutes. So I I can do that, but it's just not readily available.
Yeah.
So let me say.
The Al's letter as well to Amy. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so so let me say that those letters apply to the other site as well as this one. We have to, we have another hearing that we need to reopen. So I'm going to ask the planning board now to make a determination on this particular site. Regarding what do they wish to do?
I I have a motion to make, as I said earlier, to approve with conditions. It's rather detailed. I have it in writing. If people want to see it, I can put it up on the screen. I assume.
Do I have a second to this?
You gotta see the motion first, I suppose.
Right. I was gonna say, we don't have um, I I we're asking, we're we're sort of stressing the system in terms of trying to get multiple things up. Maybe I I can't share because I don't have the power to do that.
Well, um, we could continue the hearing.
Here's the motion if you want to see it. Four conditions and four findings.
Um, you want to read it, please?
Move that this project be approved with conditions with the following conditions. One, that the house to be constructed shall not be larger than four thousand square feet. Residential growth floor. And two, no exposed ledge facing Jerusalem Road or Windy Hill Road shall be removed, except for otherwise disturbed from existing conditions, as I said. Two twenty-four twenty-one today. And the three, no further removal of existing trees and undergrowth exceeding two feet in height shall occur. Except within the footprint of the house and stormwater drainage structure. And the four, the site will be vegetated by trees and brushy plants covering a total of thirty percent of the lot area. Or the same percentage that existed of such vegetation prior to site work being conducted, whichever is less lesser. Further, that the board make the following findings, that pursuant to section three hundred dash five point four C one A, the house proposed is out of scale. To other single-family homes in the area. E, that pursuant to section three hundred dash five point four C one A, the work requires vegetated buffers and screening. C, that pursuant to three hundred five point four C one B, exposed ledge face is a unique topographical. Procedure is not the right word, um, feature needing preservation. D, that pursuant to section three hundred five point four C one B. But the site work conducted without a building permit and the work as proposed. Do not minimize changes to existing vegetation and topography. If I could just explain briefly, uh. I'm trying to mimic the language that's in the bylaw and what limits it provides to things we can actually do. So to the butters who think this isn't strong enough, um, it's what the bylaw, the large home review bylaw allows us to do. So I'll make that motion. I'll change that one word, topographical, it should be feature, not procedure. Other than that, that's the motion.
Can I get a second for the motion? Is there a discussion? We have a a note.
Yeah, um, so the the biggest thing is that they're asking for forty-nine hundred square feet RGFA. And you're saying you think it should be limited to four thousand, which basically means a redesign.
Well, let me, let me just point out again, you have to make decisions in reference to the bylaw. And C, five point four C one A says, proposed construction will be reviewed in relation to the scale of other structures in its vicinity. Be appropriate use of massing. Now, I know the applicant has made a lot of comparisons to larger buildings, but they're multi-unit buildings. We've heard two examples from the butters. They're single-family buildings and I I do think it's out of scale and I think it's within. Our purview under that section of the bylaw to want to be able to comment and try to influence that decision.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's a discreet, um, it's a discreet um condition. That uh certainly the the uh the applicant would would have to uh do a redesign for. But if they have to do a redesign, then it would be like. A major modification, so they'd have to come back anyway. With what their changes are to accommodate this condition. I don't know, I think there's.
But wait, wait, we gotta have one voice at a time, please.
I'll just say a modification isn't is a modification of an already approved project.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not suggesting, I'm suggesting it approving it with these conditions and then if they want to modify later further, that's a whole, that's a whole nother issue.
But they they would have to modify to meet the four thousand square foot requirement.
Correct.
I mean, um, and they'd have a choice where they could say. That's arbitrary and capacious. Four thousand square feet isn't enough. No family can live in Cohasset in less than four thousand square feet. And appeal it to land court. And then that would take. I don't know, Lauren, do you have any idea how much, how long land court is these days? Or does it go to um the zoning board of appeals first?
The interesting, the other interesting feature of this bylaw is it does not have an appeal process written into itself. Even as a lawyer, I couldn't tell you where it goes next, but.
I mean, usually it's for zoning issues, it's uh zoning board of appeals then, but. Lauren, do you know, would it just go to land court automatically?
You know, I I tend to um concur. I think it would go straight to land court. It's not something that's upheld in in state law, so I don't know that it would go to our zoning board.
Then what do they take? They take six months or a year, right?
It would go to land court or superior court and all I can tell you, you know. They both put cases on a track, a time track. Of a year to a year and a half, but the courts are moving much slower, slower because of COVID.
Right.
But for a year or a year and a half means it goes all the way out to trial. I mean, lots of cases don't go that way, so.
Right. So I'm just trying to go through the logistics. So I mean, I think it would behoove. If this was the requirement, it would behoove the applicant to redesign and come back for a modification.
I, all I have to say is I'd appreciate a second at this point, so we can at least vote one way or the other.
Well, we're we're just discussing it ahead of the second. That's all.
Okay, so right now I I can't see everyone, but I would like to ask if any planning board member is interested in commenting. Besides Tom and Clark. I I literally can't see you and and you can't raise your hand, um, so please feel free to weigh in. Looks to me like Eric Potter would like to comment.
I was just scratching my head, but I I'll surely comment. Um, I think that uh. As usual, Tom's points are are excellent ones to be made. I don't know how comfortable I feel. Approving with conditions like this. I just don't know how comfortable I feel with it. I think it's uh, I I think there's, especially the first four conditions. And it's limiting the square footage. I I don't know where I, I don't know where I stand on that right now. Um, uh, we've never. We've never really approved with conditions, so it'd be a new avenue to go down, and I'd have to give it some thought.
All right, well, we, we have a motion. Paul Colery.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess one of my questions would be, would it be, would it be appropriate question to ask the developers and the owners of the site if they'd be open to that? Because I'm just curious what their feelings are before we potentially open ourselves up to some further litigation that could be detrimental to the town, you know?
I can answer that right off the bat, that we would not be interested in that.
All right, thank you very much for that comment. So we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
All right. I'd like to get a vote of the board. I'm gonna go around alphabetically. Clark Brewer.
Aye.
Tom Callahan.
Aye.
Paul Grady.
Abstain.
Eric Potter.
Aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. So at this point.
So it passes, that, that motion, the motion and the requirements in the motion passes as the large home review?
Question on that. So the motion was for both, for both houses?
No, we have to go to the, we have to reopen the hearing for the second home.
Okay, so, but on the letterhead, it said the, the the conditions for both houses, correct?
I'm making the motion on the individual projects, but it's gonna be the identical motion.
Got it.
You'd like me to remove my headings, which is for my own education, I'll do that.
All right, so at this point.
Can we move on to the next one?
We move on to the next one. Do we close this public hearing, or does it stay open?
It's closed. We voted on it.
Okay, I'm just, wanna make sure that that's, that's how this concludes.
Can I clarify something? Excuse me.
Yes, you may.
We talked about, we were starting to talk about design modifications, which really has been the spirit of the large home review. Usually the conditions that I've seen in the past have things to do with modifying the architecture, buffer, landscape buffers, really things that pertain to the spirit of this bylaw, and I think my worry right now is we're left with no input other than reduce it to 4,000. So you're okay with us doing that however we like?
No, if you change it, you have to come back for a modification. I mean, the-
But there was no directive to come back. There's no directive to come back. That's why I'm a little confused.
Well, the 4,000 square foot requires a redesign, I mean, by its nature, and if you redesign the project from what's proposed, you have to come back for a modification.
I just want to say-
That's the part I'm confused about, yeah.
I'm just-
Another hearing, or?
Wait, 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 let the applicant speak first, then Tom Callahan, then Clark Brewer.
So, but this, but this project was approved, wasn't it? That's the part I'm trying to understand. You just said you approved the project.
But if you make any changes, any substantial changes, the building inspector determines are substantial.
The approval is noting the changes. We're not making the changes. The board is.
Yeah, but it's gonna require a redesign. I mean, if you look under, at the end of this, at the end of this bylaw, any substantial changes or design deviations on the reviewed project must be approved by the building inspector as minor. And it's hard to imagine that lopping off 20% of the square footage is gonna be minor.
But those changes are made by the applicant usually, after an approval.
Can I-
For modification.
Okay, wait, let Tom speak, then Clark, and then Mr. Turaki. Tom.
Mr. Turaki, just because it hasn't, we've never seen a decision like this before, doesn't mean it can't be done. And-
But why wouldn't you ask us to make changes and come back to you with the revised project?
I'll get to that in a moment, but very specifically, I read C1a and C1b very, very carefully. And the whole concept of scale and preservation of landscape, to me, has been ignored. And if it's been ignored in the past by previous applicants, shame on all of us. But this is, this, these, these conditions that I proposed are tied exactly into the language of the bylaw. And in relation to the scale of the project you have put before us. Now, I'm not your lawyer, but I will tell you that, your choice here to me is either you try to appeal this decision or you redesign the project and make a new large home application accordingly, if you're over the 3,500 square foot.
I guess mine was a procedural question, you know, usually.
The procedural question is appeal it or come back with something that meets the conditions that we just set.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the proper procedure had been for to ask us to reduce it to the size you wanted and then have us represented at the next hearing?
Mr. Turaki.
Please.
Mr. Turaki.
You're not recognized. This is a discussion between Tom Callahan, Tom Callahan and Mr. Turaki, and I'd like to see if we can bring this together so that we can move on to the next case.
I just want to say, I believe Mr. Brewer asked if these conditions would be met by the applicant, and I believe Mr. Richards said no. I think the question was asked.
But, but-
I said no to agreeing to reducing the size to 4,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said I disagreed with reducing the size to 4,000 square feet. That was, that was the disagreement that I had.
Did you disagree with any of the other conditions in the file?
I hadn't, I did, I did not get to screenshot them. I can't see them. So I don't know what I'm agreeing to or disagreeing to. All I know is that we were disagreeing for the 4,000 square feet. We do have potential buyers for these homes, and what they, what they are asking for is, is what we are trying to provide. So that no exposed ledge facing Jerusalem Road or Windy Hill Road shall be removed, chipped or otherwise disturbed. So is this, is this referring to cliff ledge or any visible ledge? The only ledge that we're trying to remove on this project is to put the footings or the foundation in.
Let me, let me be very clear about this, that the past proposals to preserve ledge in the town have been directed to the ledge you can see, because it's obvious that the ledge you can see is the unique feature that makes Cohasset what it is. One of the comment letters we received, I believe it was the one we were just referring to a little while ago, mentioned the ledge that faces the street at Jerusalem Road, the exposed ledge face. That is what I am concerned about, and that's what this motion goes to. What you take out from under the ground, yes, it may have blasting implications and damage implications to neighbors, but the feature of it that people see and what makes it unique and worth pursuing is the ledge that you see exposed out of the ground. And so, yes, this is just referring to the cliff facing Jerusalem Road and Windy Hill Road.
Right, we have no intentions on touching anything next to it.
Then, then, only because a butter or neighbor brought that up as a concern, I wanted to be assured of that and believe it fits into C1b.
Right, absolutely.
The, the tobacco fee is not adversely changed.
Absolutely, and I completely agree.
Number four, number four, if I can just go on, goes along the same part of the bylaw. And I will tell you that the 30% is what's being discussed as we speak. On the zoning working group about the lot clearing proposal, it's gonna come before town meeting. And it's an objective to stop the wholesale clear cutting of lots for development, on the theory that unit engineering is better than what Mother Nature put there. That's the thinking behind that. But if, if a lot had been less than 30% covered with woods and brush beforehand, you can use that percentage because it says whichever one is less. That's the thinking about it. And again, I don't think it, you know, if you're clear cutting the lot, you're not preserving the landscape under C1b.
Right, we are not clear cutting a lot by any means. You know, we took out a minimal amount of shrubs, a couple of six-inch diameter trees maybe, and the amount that we're taking out on the upper lot to accommodate the swimming pool is, is minor compared to the, the, the amount of trees on the site. The site where we bought it is a hill with grass and ledge, and the only place of trees is, is on the Jerusalem Road cliff, which, you know, there's a few trees that we have to remove, but we are replacing, you know, an abundance of trees, I think more than the concentration I've ever seen.
Then, then perhaps this condition can be met. I didn't, I do not have a clear picture of what was there before because site work was done before any permit was even applied for. And I have a problem with that, and I have a problem that, you know, I mean, it's a difference in perspective, and it's what these bylaws that are coming forward to the town are doing a different perspective about preserving the environment over, over the need for a swimming pool. Nobody needs a swimming pool. If you can-
I understand, no one needs a swimming pool, but the potential buyers would like a swimming pool, and it's my job to deliver that.
Well, you know.
I would like to stop, I want to stop this discussion because this is, we're discussing preferences, which is not appropriate for this particular conversation. We have made a decision on the lower project, and we need to move on to the next project.
Well, I don't think that that decision was made with, with, with all the information.
No, we made the decision. So you're making a decision based on this letter.
So your, your position is to approve this project, but the-
It's approved with conditions.
So we just need to-
The hearing is over.
So we need to not finish another 900 plus square feet of the, of the house.
The hearing's over, yeah. You, you can-
But if we make no major-
You can redesign or figure out how to lop 20% of.
Which we just don't finish it. So that would not be a major change in the design, correct?
I don't know, you know, it's probably, if, if you want to just leave the design the way it is and hope that the building inspector goes along with this condition.
Oh, we just don't finish, we just don't-
Then, you know, I think you guys have to figure it out. Don't try and figure it out right now.
I'm just looking for a little clarification around it, that's all.
I, I have to tell you, I would be very disturbed if your response was to make 900 square feet not unfinished to get around the definition of RGFA. I, I have to work with the definition of RGFA because of this bylaw. I don't like it. Now, the intent here is to make the house footprint smaller, but if you want to get around it by just making the footprint the same and create unheeded, unused space, you know, that speaks volumes, and, 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 you know, what's going to happen, then somebody's gonna buy the house, move in, and they're gonna finish it under the radar that none of us are gonna see.
Right, but that's what happens for, for a majority of these construction projects.
Well, I, let me, let me speak to that. Let me speak to that. A large house review was required on a house where that exact thinking was taking place, and it was eventually required that the house go through a large house review because they could not essentially indicate that, well, we're not gonna finish the, 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 the area because it goes on the tax rolls. So we are, we are done with this particular discussion. We need to move on to the next discussion.
Could we continue the, the public hearing for the next one?
You mean to another date?
Yeah.
I-
Give the applicant a chance to digest and respond what we decided on Lot 31.
We're okay to move forward.
Okay.
All right. I don't have, okay, so I don't have either Lauren or Jen. I'd like to take what you have up, Tom, down so that I can see everyone.
But I'm sure I'm here.
Oh, sorry, okay. So we are now going to reopen the public hearing pursuant to 300-5.4 of the Cohasset zoning bylaw for an application for a large house plan review filed by Eames Capital Partners LLC. The subject property is Windy Hill Road Lot 32, advertised as 630 Jerusalem Road. Please note new Windy Hole, Windy Hill Road assignment pending. So we are opening up the hearing, and with that, we turn to the applicant first to make any comments about modifications or, or adjustments based on the previous discussions that we had in our last hearing. This is continued from the 10th of February.
All right, so Jeff Assed here, again with Morse Engineering for the record. I'll start with the changes to the site plan since the last time we met. First off, same as the project before, we added the coverage calculations to the table in the top right corner. Secondly, we have they, the applicant agreed to convert a portion of their full basement to a crawl space. This area here is about 12 feet wide in order to minimize the ledge removal. So in this case, the, the house has been cited in such a way to minimize ledge removal, although it's, it can't be avoided with the conditions on the property. So the garage is on the highest point on the property where ledge is the shallowest because that will be on a slab. The breezeway between the garage and the main box of the house will also be on a slab. And then this quarter, this portion of the section where basement where you had the most ledge removal, that's now going to be a crawl space. So you would have some ledge removal through this area, but this lower portion of the basement is, actually sits higher than existing grade. So no ledge removal through there. So we've been able to really significantly reduce the ledge removal. I'm gonna move on to the landscaping plan here. This is the overall one for both properties. And the, the existing tree line is right here and here. So the only area of woods where to be removed is here and here. It's a total of about 2,200 square feet. And there are no trees greater than 12 inches diameter in that area. It's mainly smaller brush. This entire area between Jerusalem Road and the pool area, which is that ledge face that you want to preserve, is fully intended to be preserved. This back corner, there are some evergreens that need to be pruned back, but otherwise the trees will remain. So that's the extent of the changes to the site work, and I'll turn it over to John to discuss the architectural features.
I want to give you some building height information, similar to the other house. The average grade is calculated to be 39.2 feet. Official building height to the middle of the highest roof is 29 feet, four and a half inches. Again, requirement is 35. Average height to the, to the ridge is 32 feet and an inch. Requirement is, or maximum is 40 feet. So this house is well under the required height limitations. One architectural modification was the treatment of the chimney. We articulated a little bit further, widening it at the bottom and adding a trim line here so that the base of the chimney feels part of the stone foundation of the house and delineates that. So that was one, I know, one of the design modifications that was asked for. And yeah, we also changed the type of the lights facing Straits Pawn on either side of this French door. We are looking for a gooseneck type fixture, the cut sheet of which we can submit once we finalize that fixture. So it's more of a downlight fixture rather than a sconce fixture. That was another item that was discussed. So I think that's pretty much it. I think those were the two things that were brought up last night.
Planning board members, can I see if anyone would like to comment? Clark Brewer? You're, you're muted.
I did comment on the chimney as a part of the last review, and those modifications- I did comment on the chimney as a part of the last um, uh, review and those modifications are, are an improvement. I don't have any other comments about this project. Oh, oh, what, what, one, one more thing is the, the line of trees along the west elevation. Um, it looks like there's like evergreen screen trees, which is a great, a great thing to get, to have screening um, to the butter. Uh, it, it's just that they're, they're super, they're super regular. You know, the, 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 the indigenous landscape and the, the, the cedars on the Jerusalem roadside are very, you know, irregular and naturalistic. Um, so to have evergreen trees spaced in line on a string and, and spaced three feet away. Seems like it would be an improvement to, uh, to vary those uh, a little bit in height and in alignment. To make them more naturalistic. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Tom Callahan?
Just for the record, I'll repeat that I don't think three hundred five point four C one A or B is being respected or honored with this project.
Right, thank you. Um, Paul Grady?
I have no comments on this one. So mine stands as the same as the last.
Um, Paul Colery?
No comment, Madam Chair.
Eric Potter? Um, I'd like to see the back of the house that's facing the, uh, the historic house next to it.
Um, sure, let me share my screen. Uh, do you mean the, the house along Windill Hill?
No, the, the house that's on um, the, uh, the west side of um, Wendy Hill, the western side. Where the, where the, um, the older house is.
The big condo building.
That's correct.
Um, so it would be a combination of these two facades. Uh, if you go back to the, uh, the floor plan, uh, this is the, 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 um, it's this side of the building right here. The back of the garage and then this connection piece and then the side of this piece right here.
And, and what is the height of that side of the building?
Uh, that side of the building is lower than the, the main portion. Again, the, this dash line here is the mid height. It's approximately three feet lower, so it's approximately twenty-six feet, twenty-six, twenty-six and a half feet uh, to the mid height of that higher roof right here. This gambrel is a little bit higher. This, this is probably closer to twenty-eight feet to the midpoint of this piece.
And can, can I see the landscaping plan for that side of the building?
I'm sure I believe this is the plan that, uh, Jeff had pulled up.
So again, the margins are very tight here. Um, and the way the vegetation, if this, if the, I, I'm facing this image and I'm thinking it's my left and you've got a row of trees that are staggered, but they're not, but they're basically just a straight line. Um, that seems to, uh, as if it could look a lot more visually pleasing if it wasn't a straight line like that, but had some kind of uh, variation in, in the way in which the trees are placed.
I just made.
Is that, is that, I, I couldn't tell whether that was the axis you were talking about? Right there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then the, uh, the, um, the, the uh, north facing um, angle of the property, you have a few trees there, you have five and, and there's already vegetation on that ledge.
That's correct. In fact, um, I'm going to let Jeff share his plan because I think his plan was a better representation of that. So I'm going to stop sharing mine.
As all I, it just looked like there was going to be grass there and I'm, I would like to know if they're planning to take the trees off of the ledge that's facing Jerusalem Road.
No, tho- those trees are not proposed to be removed um, in this green area between the pool area and Jerusalem Road.
So that would mean that people on Jerusalem Road would not be looking up at the house and the, and the back at where the pool would be. That will be, that will be screened.
They, they'll have to really look up, up and, and through that wooded area to, um, to see up to the, where the house is. All, all that veget- the majority of that vegetation is being removed with the exception of those two pink areas.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other additional comments on the, uh, part of the planning board?
I'd like to hear them respond to some of the public comments because there's a lot of, there's a lot of contrary comments about clear cutting.
Um, so, uh, do we have additional comments that have not been read by the public?
I'm in, I'm sure it's Lauren Lynn. Yes, we do. Um, let's see, where do we begin? Okay, we, Amy Bernicker. Um, I don't, I don't recall which address this is, but I know she's in a butter. It was clear cut. I know the property from before. Laura McGlynn, six forty-six Jerusalem Road. The swimming pool will be right outside my kitchen window and most land has emphasis on already been cut, cleared. Kathleen Barrigan, six forty-six Jerusalem Road, unit eight. The trees have already all been clear cut, including the ones along the ledge of Jerusalem Road on lot thirty-one. Um, and another comment, how much ledge would you remove in lot thirty-two? Does that include the ledge removed for the pool? Could you please go over the trees along the ledge that you're planning to cut down? Uh, Virginia Jensen, five forty-two Jerusalem Road. Same concerns as prior project size, not in conformity with neighborhood rock drilling, traffic and parking of construction vehicles. How much rock drilling is necessary for the pool? Uh, and then one more comment from Kathy Barrigan. Does that mean all those red cedar trees will not be removed?
All right, thank you. Can the applicant respond to any of these or wishes to respond to any of these?
Yeah, I can take that. The, um, so the, as far as the clear cutting, there were a number of trees that were removed, were removed by the previous owner. And then the current owner did some tree removal on the lower lot, but they were within the limits of what was approved by Conservation under the stormwater permit. I understand they had not been to you yet. But they did have a stormwater permit and it was done under the direction of the Conservation Office. Um, the swimming pool, I mean, it's well within the setbacks for allowed by zoning. And I think the question about trees along, the cedar trees along the top of the embankment to Jerusalem Road, there are two cedar trees that are being removed that are about ten inch diameter. Um, they're the bigger trees you see there, but there are, I want to say eighteen other red and white cedars that are being proposed to be planted on the property to make up for that.
All right, um, what about the comment regarding um, the relationship between a swimming pool and someone's kitchen window? Can you verify that?
Um, I mean, the, the closest to butter would be the cliff top condominiums and they scale off at being a hundred and sixty feet away. And this pool, so a hundred and sixty feet away from the pool and there is a wo- wooded area between that building and this pool that's going to remain wooded. Um, and again, the pool is well within this, the zoning setbacks for a swimming pool.
And I'm sure.
Uh, yes.
There's, there's been two more comments since I last finished. Thomas Carroll, will the conditions specified by Mr. Callahan for for Wendy Hill also apply to lot thirty-two? And Kathy Barrigan, again, six forty-six Jerusalem Road, unit eight. There are only four small trees as a border between the house and our building. That property line is about eighty feet long. The four smaller trees will not be sufficient to act as a privacy buffer along that eighty foot above midline.
So it, it is a wooded area in that between there. Um, I mean, I can't tell you how many trees or how much of that's brush and how much is, of it is trees. But I think the owner could, um, consider supplementing that wooded area with a few additional evergreens and such.
All right, I'm sure that the, the, the new buyers would, 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 would appreciate some, some major screening there as well. So, um, it's not something that we would leave unattended.
All right, any other comments from the planning board? Then we are at,
Me, I have one. I, there was one thing that was missed is the amount of, uh, if I heard it correctly from one of the, uh, citizens is the ledge being removed for just the pool. I think someone asked that. If I'm not, if I'm mistaken, please.
Sure. Um, I, I estimate fifty-eight yards of material for trucks for this swimming pool.
All right, um, so, uh, let me, uh, if, if you wouldn't mind taking the diagram down. So, so let me just say that what I hear from this discussion is that there is a concern about the specificity of the vegetation that's going to be on, onsite to screen the swimming pool for the residents in the house and the people who are living in the house next door. Um, there is a concern about, uh, the possibility of clear cutting vegetation that is there. Um, and, um, and, uh, and there's been spoken, uh, references to individual trees uh, that people recognize. There's a concern that, um, there will be a significant amount of ledge removed put in the swimming pool. Uh, there is, I, I, I would say from an aesthetics perspective, and I, and I think Mr. Turaki is, is um, capable of accommodating it on the first building, I would imagine it would be true for the second as well, is that the back of the, the, the back facing on, um, the house that's next door, it has a monolithic physical form to it and I'm sure there must be solutions to make it um, less imposing and more aesthetically pleasing. Paul Grady?
Uh, I might be preempting this, but what about going forward with the same conditions put forth by Tom Callahan?
I intend, I intend to make that motion, but there's an additional public comment. I'm not, I'm in a butter about some specific concerns they raised in a letter and I'm not familiar with that particular letter, so. I don't know how we address that.
All right, um, so let me ask, Lauren, were you able to find, it, it's really tough at ten thirty at night to find something. Uh, and, and so I'm, I'm, I feel, it's, I'm sympathetic to the ability for us to be able to gather the info if we can't. But Lauren, do you have the letters that, that Tom was speaking about?
I'm, I'm sure, thank you. I, I did not log into the virtual system earlier as you had moved on from that conversation point. I didn't think that, um, that it was going to be necessary. I will log in now. One moment, please.
Uh, can I ask another procedural question?
You may.
The board in the meantime, uh, if this project is similarly approved with conditions, we change the design to conform to the conditions, which becomes a modification and we come back with the modification. Is the modification also going to be approved with conditions? So is that, you know, I'm just curious about the process beyond that. Are we going to have a similar process with additional conditions?
Okay, so, so let me, let me see if I understand what you're saying. If you go and make modifications in response to the decision that's been made and you come back to us, are, is there double jeopardy? And will you be once again reviewed for additional conditions?
Right, I'm just curious about the process going forward. Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think if, if, if we have a, a modification to a large home review that we would open up a public hearing and, uh, review the changes uh, and we could approve with conditions, but if you've met the conditions of our previous approval with conditions, it's hard to imagine actually making any conditions for you or new conditions. New, more onerous conditions. I don't think that would be,
Right, that would not be, that would not be in the interests of the board.
I, I, I will assure you that it would not be my intent. I'm not looking to prolong this forever.
All right, I didn't follow that. What was the, what was the answer?
So the, the conclusion was that, uh, if you were to go away, make modifications and come before us and you met the modifications that we requested, we would not sit and penalize you further. We, we have stated what we are concerned about at this meeting here.
Unless you change the paint color to bright orange, in which case we might have a condition that says don't use bright orange.
Well, that wouldn't be a change because that's what we've been planning all along.
Oh, right, right. You better.
Uh, we're getting slack, slap happy. Uh, Paul Grady?
Um, I agree with everything you just said, but in other words, we could impose conditions.
Could.
We could.
We could, but the, the intent would be, the starting point would be that we're trying to meet together at a place where both parties accept the outcome.
No, I just wanted to be clear to Mr. Chiraki there, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't.
The intent is.
Okay.
I wouldn't envision anything because I looked at this thoroughly as to what we could do with the project before us and I don't, I don't think there would be any other reason to condition further that I wouldn't, would not have already included in the motion.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Gromen?
Yeah, I said one question for Mr. Callahan. Could you give a rationale as to the four thousand square feet? Was that, uh, calculations that you did for other houses in the area?
It's, it's based on the scale of the neighborhood, based on that overall plan you showed us the aerial photograph of houses all over and the information received by others. And I don't, I don't,
It was four thousand, the average?
I, I did not average it, no.
Okay.
It's trying to be accommodating to the modern preference for super large houses while at the same time being more in scale of the neighborhood, but without considering the multi-unit load. I don't think that they apply as a comparison.
So it's just an arbitrary number to be clear.
No, it's not, it's not arbitrary.
Arbitrary number, it's a number to accommodate both sides.
Tom has said in the past that no, no family needs a house bigger than two thousand square feet, so I think he's being generous with the four thousand.
Yeah, that's not true nowadays. I mean, home offices, gyms, everyone's, uh, everyone's working from home. Five thousand square feet doesn't get you very much nowadays.
And five eighty Jerusalem is four thousand square feet, is that correct?
It is six thousand five hundred square feet.
It's unbelievable.
Which one is that? Five eighty?
Yes.
Yeah.
How big is it?
Big.
Thousand five hundred. It started out at thirty flat, it started out at thirty-four seventy-four, I believe.
It's not that big. I don't think it was that big and we should have approved that with conditions as well.
Tom, can you make your motion?
Um, but let, let me just, there's a few more comments in the, the Q and A. One, uh, is, uh, asking us to address the concerns in the letter. The next is the butter, the buttman line does not have any brush, it's wide open.
Can we remove this, this screen while we're, we're listening to this? It's distracting, sorry. Thank you.
Somebody asked me to make a motion.
And then there are people that are commenting that live in the neighborhood that are about the size of their individual homes.
I'm sure.
Uh, yes, you may go ahead.
Sorry, I, I had dropped off the meeting for a bit when I tried to access my, um, my documents. I'm back now. I have the letter from the abutters that they're requesting to be read into the record. Would you like me to read it right now?
Please.
Thank you. Um, and as I say that, now I can't find it. Um, here we go. Okay. This is from the residents of the cliff top condominium at six forty-six Jerusalem Road, um, addressed to the planning board chair. We, the undersigned, appreciate this opportunity to express our concerns about the proposed house construction on lot thirty-two Wendy Hill Road and Cohasset. We are the owners and residents of the property known as Cliff Top Condominium located at six forty-six Jerusalem Road. Please note that our building abuts lot thirty-two on their west side, so construction there will have an especially significant and impactful effect on those of us living in any of the condominium's nine units. The proposed construction on lot, The proposed construction on Lot 32 has caused consternation amongst the residents of Cliff Top condominium, especially as more details have emerged in the last few weeks about the sheer scale of the home to be built, not to mention the proposed adjacent construction of a large home on Lot 31, Wendy Hill Road. The follows are several main concerns, which we respectfully request each member of the planning board carefully consider when making a decision about construction on these lots. Ledge, it is an internal component across its physical beauty. At the planning board meeting on 21021, it was mentioned that 210 cubic yards of ledge would be removed. To put that into perspective, please note that 210 cubic yards of ledge is approximately 21 yard dump trucks of ledge. This significant amount of ledge to be blasted from the earth and taken away. Is that amount of ledge removal a combination of Lot 32 or N31, or is the 210 just from Lot 32? Does ledge removal include the amount of removed for the pool? If not, how much ledge will be removed for the pool? What is the ramifications of extracting this considerable amount of ledge from the property? What is the process for removing it? Trees, Jerusalem Road was nominated by the town of Cohasset and designated by the state of Massachusetts as scenic road. It was given this designation to help protect the environment and character of the town, specifically to protect mature and historic stone walls lining public town property on scenic roadways. It is stated in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C. After a road has been designated scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving road, paving work done within the road, respect thereto, shall not involve or include cutting or removal of trees or the tearing down or destruction of stone walls or portion thereof, except within the prior written consent of the planning board. We realize that this law only applies to the public townland along Jerusalem Road. However, the trees on Lot 32 line the edge of the property along 30, along Jerusalem Road, particularly the red cedars along the ledge are part of the scenic road. Not legally perhaps, but certainly are an integral part of the beauty that led to Jerusalem Road being designated as a scenic road in the first place. You can see that the trees along the ledge on Lot 31 have already been cut down. Look at the difference between Lot 31 stripped part of the ledge and the section on Lot 32 where the trees still remain. The beauty of the trees and vegetation that once lined Lot 31 on Jerusalem Road have been taken away. Beauty not just taken from Lot 31, but from that entire clip that goes along the bend of Jerusalem Road and overlooks Straits Pond. There is a tall deciduous tree on that ledge that has a bald eagle's nest in it. We've often seen the eagle in that tree. Eagles commonly reuse their nests. We hope that this tree, along with all other trees that remain on a ledge lining Jerusalem Road, will not be cut down. Rather that they be preserved for their beauty and for the habitat they provide for birds and animals. Residents of Cliff Top, Cliff Top can attest to seeing I'm sorry, I dropped off. All sorts of animals. Fisher cat, herd it, as well as birds such as bald eagles, hawks, osprey, et cetera. One of the main reasons we chose to live here is because we love nature and being surrounded by nature. If the trees are cut down and the land is disrupted, the home of birds and animals disappear, and so does what makes our home and neighborhood such a special place. The resident of Cliff, Cliff Top are saddened about the prospective loss of wondrous habitat. Please see attached photos of Lot 32 and 31 before the trees were cut down, photos taken in July of 2019. There's two more pages here. We're almost there though. Light pollution. There appears to be a lot of lighting in the large house and exterior property. We are concerned about the significant amount of lighting that will be emitted the rear side, west side of the proposed house above our property. This rear side of the house includes the following sections, garage, main house, first and second floor decks, paver, patio, and pool. The west side of the house would be 30 feet from our property line. The entire structure on the side would be approximately 80 feet wide and 30 feet tall, stretching almost the entire length of the property line. There would be a significant amount of lighting coming from the exterior and interior of the building, particularly because there are several outdoor structures that use exterior lighting, pool, patio, two decks, paver, patio. We are concerned that light will shine into our windows and disturb residents' sleep as well as light up our property. In addition, as mentioned, there is a considerable amount of wildlife in the area and artificial light at, at night. The interruption of darkness has dangerous and disruptive side effects for wildlife and plants. Also, motion detector lights will be going on and off due to animals. The lighting will also affect nighttime drivers below the ledge and most likely will even be seen across the pond. The site plan appears to show extensive exterior lighting. We kindly ask for the lighting plan to be reviewed and explained. We would like to see minimal lighting and used only for what is necessary. Vegetated buffer. If the proposed houses to be built, we would like to see some type of privacy screen along the abutment line. We think it would be appreciative of both parties, given the scale of the proposed house close to our proximity, close proximity to our property, extensive lighting, trees that have also been cut down and should be replaced, and sound will be heard from the decks, pool, and patio. We would like to suggest a vegetated buffer of composed of an adequate amount of mature trees. House, the scale of the proposed house appears too large for the lot, is affront to the house on a legal sized lot. What is the entrance to the three car garage? As you can see, the residents of Cliff Top condominium are quite troubled about the construction of an oversized lot on, house on Lot 32. Included among concerns are houses that are too large for lots, overly luminous lighting, the negative effect on the charming views for which Jerusalem Road is renowned, the impact of fragile Straits Pond ecosystem, the destruction of significant portions of ledge, removal of trees, and destruction of bird and animal habitat, the noise resulting from blasting and pile driving construction equipment. We suspect these concerns and many others are shared by other nearby residents in the butters. In short, the construction of a massive home on Lot 32 along with other, another overly large home on 31 will have far reaching detrimental effects. We urge you carefully to, and seriously consider the concerns we have raised as you make decisions moving forward. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Kathleen Barrigan and Philip Avery, Donna Elamita, Thomas Gormley, Roberta Dubrovsky, Kara Sashetti, Susan Guilfoyle, Patricia Moran, and Lauren McGlynn of 646 Jerusalem Road.
Are we, are we supposed to answer that?
You're not, you're not required to comment on that unless you wish to.
I mean, I, I guess my response would be that we're not doing anything outside of what Cohasset bylaws state. And we're, 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 we're trying to, you know, we had some good luck with 14 Wendy Hill. We, we built the house there and that was 4,000 plus square feet, two houses down. There, there was a lot of opposition to that at the start, but, but the end result was, was, was good and we got a lot of positive response for that. We're, we're not trying to, we're not looking for variances. We're not, we're not doing anything that we don't have to do to, to accommodate our, our well-designed product. You know, we're, we're, we're looking to build a house on a buildable lot. We have two buildable lots that we purchased and we want to provide houses for people that want them. We're not, we're not, we're not skirting the system. We're honest. We come to the, the large home review when others don't. We, we, we are as transparent as we possibly can be. We're, we're taking out only the amount of ledge that we need to, to, to build our structures. We're, we're, we're maintaining the landscape as we can. And we're, we're just trying to be respectful of everyone involved. So I, I don't know if that answers the letter, but there was a lot said there. Just want to make sure that people know that we are considering the, the community.
Thank you for your comments. At this point, I'd like to see if there is any other comments that planning board members would like to make. Eric Potter?
My comment is just very brief and it's regards, I want to be clear that I, I'm very mindful and respectful of all the comments that, 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 that the abutters have made on this project. And my nay vote on, on the last one and maybe pending nay vote coming up. If there's a, as a similar conditions is not reflective of, of necessarily support, but maybe necessarily the procedure of it all. And, and, you know, I, I, I think it's important that this discussion has come up with the butters and that's really the point of a large home review because there's like to be back and forth. I do think any developer as they should have the opportunity to hear out all the abutters comments, make changes as necessary and then be afforded the opportunity to come up with a final proposal. And, and, and in this case, the large home review, not, there not being a denial allowed, being put on the spot to, to approve with conditions, it was, is not something I feel comfortable doing.
All right. Thank you. Any other planning board members would like to make a comment? Then I would like to ask a motion from the board in terms of proceeding.
Make the same motion I made before that I put back up on the screen.
Do I have, Clark Brewer? Do I have a second?
I second it.
Paul Grady? I'll do a roll call vote. Clark Brewer?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan? Paul Grady?
Aye with the conditions that listed by Tom.
Eric Potter?
Aye, nay, and that's because I haven't had an opportunity to review these conditions and, and, and make my own determination on whether or not it should be added to, amended, or, or deleted in any way, but I respect the rest of the board's decision.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye. This motion passes. And this will be returned to the applicant. And the applicant can come back to us with a response based on the conditions.
So to be clear, we have to come back with the response to the conditions or this is approved with condition?
If you make any changes to what was in the original submission, you'd have to come back.
So if we don't, okay.
Well, major ma, it's major modifications.
Yep.
That is correct. That is correct. That's a, a, not a particularly definite term that I can't, I can't give you the specification of what is major. But I think
Bylaw. It's right in the bylaw at the end of 5.4.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. I haven't looked at that in that level of detail. All right. So with that, we have concluded the two public hearings on Wendy Hill. And we still have some minor business to do based on administration. So thank you very much applicants and citizens for attending the meeting tonight. And I'd like to now just have the planning board members, anyone can stay if they wish. We just have to do some business. So basically, we were going to have planning board members give a quick update on their positions on the boards and committees that they're on, but I think that at the hour of 11, that we might postpone this till our next meeting.
Sure.
Can I get a, a motion for that to take place?
We don't need a
We don't need a
All right, fine. Are there topics that are not reasonably anticipated 40 hours, 48 hours in advance that we should be discussing?
No. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Just a minute. Jen Oram?
I'm sorry. I just, I have three sets of minutes and we worked hard on them. So, and I sent them out. So can I just, the dates are 12/2, 12/16, and 2/3.
Thank you. And thank you, by the way, I read them and it's really, it's great to see them.
All right. And make a motion where you approve the minutes of 12/2, 12/16, and 1, was it 1/3?
A 2/3.
2/3.
I second it.
Roll call vote?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Eric Potter, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We will adjourn. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
I, oh, I, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Paul Grady?